We're gonna, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the neighborhood board for Manoa. And at this point, Judy, I'd like to see, can you do a roll call to see who from the neighborhood board is in attendance right now?
Sure. Okay, so I have Chair Zane.
Yes?
Member Watson.
Here.
Uh, member Nagaji.
Here.
Member Fukumoto.
Here.
And then member Lumen.
Here.
Uh, member Koff.
Here.
Okay, and.
I see you now. Oh. Yup, I see you.
Member Bolso is here. Okay. Member, um, member Lee. Member Lee. Member Chong. Member Chong.
So you didn't like know who's not the chair of the hoax, yeah? It is.
Uh, just as a general reminder, anybody who is, um, not, uh, speaking or is not recognized at this time, please mute your mics. Judy?
Yes?
Um, regarding the, so is that everybody who's in attendance? We do not have quorum?
Um, right now, oh, member Kowano? I see her, she's here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I have one, two, three, four, five, six. As of right now, I have seven. Um, I'm waiting for member Bolso. Member Bolso, are you here? Member Lee, So Min Lee, member Lee. Uh, see. Okay, and member Chong. Diane Chong. As of right now, we have seven, so there's no quorum yet. We need two more.
Okay, in the meantime, we'll move forward the agenda so that way we'll try to at least start getting things handled. First off, I'd like to recognize the Honolulu Fire Department. Honolulu Fire Department, are you in attendance? Is anybody on, on this call record, uh, from the Honolulu Fire Department? At this time, I'm not hearing. Hello?
Hello?
No, I'm not. I guess that somebody else's mic was open for some reason. I'm not hearing or seeing anybody listed from Honolulu Fire Department, which is a shame because we really wanted them to show up over here to talk about, uh, issues including the, um, the dry brush of the UH faculty housing that's been caught, that's been on fire recently, as, um, considering the tragedy that's happened in Lahaina. We'll move on at that point. We'll try to come back to them if they, if somebody from the Hawaii Honolulu Fire Department shows up later. Um, next up, Honolulu Police Department?
Yes, Honolulu Police Department is present.
Thank you Lieutenant Miro. Please go ahead. You have the floor.
Yes, good evening, everybody. This is my first board meeting, so please bear with me. Uh, stats that we have for this, uh, small would be, uh, motor vehicle theft, seven burglaries, four, thefts at six, and unauthorized entry at the motor vehicles at five. Total calls for service, uh, just in excess of sixty-six hundred.
Thank you very much. Um, you're cutting it out a little bit, uh, Lieutenant, but, um, does anybody have any, uh, questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Oh, Elton?
Yes, thank you Chair. Uh, thank you Officer for coming in. Uh, unfortunately, you're gonna get the first question on the Lahaina wildfires, uh, since HFD is not here. So, um, I'm going to begin talking about this issue, not because, well, the issue is raised because of the unfortunate disaster that happened two weeks ago in Lahaina. But it, uh, it brings home to us that something like this could possibly happen in Manoa. Uh, we have had really strong winds several times this summer. These are the dry winds. And if there were ever a fire during that time, um, these fires, whether you call them house fires or wildfires, would be very hard to stop. My question for the HPD is, if there were an evacuation notice sounded, so, so the sirens sounded, and, uh, basically we're told to evacuate the valley because of wildfires, let's say, that began in the back of the valley where I live in Sub District Two. Uh, the problem is you'd have thousands of people trying to evacuate Manoa, uh, and there are only two roads out. So my question to the HPD is, do you have a contingency plan? Do you have a contingency plan already that in the event of an evacuation order, either, uh, during the nighttime or during rush hour, that you would have officers at critical points, uh, in, in, um, uh, as we go down the roads through the valley, we, we would have officers at critical points rushing traffic out of the valley, um, you know, keeping the green lights on or doing whatever, directing traffic out so that people don't get stuck in, in, uh, in bottlenecks and basically have to abandon their cars in case of a wildfire?
Uh, yeah, yes. Excellent question. Um, by all means, we've, I know we work night watch, um, I know day watch has been touching bases with the, uh, various fire departments, and this is completely within addition, not only in Manoa, but, uh, obviously everywhere. Um, I'm not sure if the department wide itself has a plan, but for us, for sure, we are identifying major intersections, like you had mentioned, to channel the traffic out. Basically, we wanna just get anyone and anyone out of the area as quickly as possible, so it'll be up to the respective, um, I guess, officers on duty at the time and the watch commanders at the time to identify, I guess, the choke points, that kind of stuff, just to make sure that we can, you know, we can get to the intersections, we can run the lights and get everybody out, also to get certain personnel in as well, which would be the fire department. And I know that's why the, uh, daytime officers have been reaching out to, um, the respective, uh, fire stations.
Okay, and if I could have a follow-up. So, so is all of this coordinated out of the Emergency Management Agency, which is headed by Dr. Ireland? Is, is there a kind of command structure there and HPD is, is under this? So, so, so there's, there's one source that decides to, um, to sound the, the evacuation siren? And, uh, you know, it's coordinated with HPD and HFD, so, so there, there is that kind of coordination already in place?
That I don't know. I can get back to you on that. Um, I'm not sure that why, um, of a spectrum. If that's in place yet, so I can't speak for the other city agencies. I'm not sure, as far as my knowledge, I don't have any knowledge of that. I know for us, if something were to happen tonight, again, we would fall back on identifying the choke points, the certain intersections and whatnot, and the police department would do everything in our power to, uh, evacuate the area as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any more questions from the board? I do have, uh, one thing that I'd like to bring to Honolulu Police Department's attention as well that we received from a community member who was unable to join us tonight, um, regarding race, uh, cars racing down Manoa Road about, um, in the late evenings. Um, sometimes apparently this person's reporting that it's about seventy to eighty miles per hour down Manoa Road. Um, has Honolulu Police Department been aware of this?
Um, I, I'm not sure personally. I, I don't know. I haven't heard anything of, anything specific of Manoa Road, um, specifically, but we can look into it and address it accordingly.
Yeah, um, have you also received any reports about, um, like racing, um, cars driving, um, um, very fast along the, um, roads around in the, in the valley?
Uh, again, nothing specific that was, that I knew of, that was presented to us, no.
Okay, uh, just, uh, in case this person watches the broadcast later on on this issue, um, can you provide, uh, information where this person and other members of the community may be able to submit reports on this issue or information to the police?
Uh, well, we do have a, every district has their, I'm sure many of you know, has their community policing teams. Um, any type of, I guess, concerns or questions, whatnot, can go through them, and a lot of times, um, they can take action, or sometimes also it gets funneled down to, uh, patrol as well, and we can address it accordingly.
Is there a contact number you can share with us, um, that way, um, again, for the broadcast purposes?
Uh, I don't have that. I can try and get that to you by the end of, end of this.
Thank you. Um, in the meantime, member Lumen, you also have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Uh, my question, my concern is that to think that some police officer, officers at these intersections can control traffic in an hysterical situation is basically, uh, a waste of time. If there's not an alternative plan, uh, it's just gonna end in disaster because people are gonna be panicking, people, things will come apart, nobody's gonna follow the rules, and the, those, those roads are narrow, especially like, uh, University Avenue, Apuna Hall, people coming off of there, there's, there's thousands of vehicles in this valley, so, uh, I don't see a plan of just having officers at intersection as a viable plan for a horrific event like a fire without some alternative. My alternative is to grab my surfboard and throw it in the Manoa stream and head down that way, but so, so if, if there needs to be some sort of a alternative plan, when one car or two cars get stuck on the road, everybody's gonna be stuck. So just a plan to be there with officers is actually uh, kind of nuts, in my opinion. If that's all you've got.
Okay, um, loaded. Again, I can bring those concerns up to, um, my higher-ups, and we can, I guess, reevaluate, uh, the certain plans and what, what actions can be taken.
Cause there has to be a foot traffic way out of here, so anyway, that's all. I'll be quiet.
Thank you, member Lumen. Uh, member Fukumoto, your hand is raised again?
Yes, I'm sorry. This is, this is my third time, so I'll, I'll shut up after this. Um, but this is in response to, to Max, um, comment. Uh, one other alternative is that there are a lot of cars that, that could go onto the, the grounds of Manoa Valley District Park, uh, given that the, um, that, that the grass would be trimmed to, you know, two or three inches at most. Um, so even though that grass could be on fire, uh, it would not, uh, cause a, a, a car or several cars to, to catch on fire, so that might be a safe place to just funnel some, some cars, or just let people know that that's an, that's a possible alternative. Instead of trying to get completely out of the valley, they could try to park on, on the baseball field or whatever, and it'd be relatively safe for a fire.
Okay, can I respond? I'm sorry, I don't wanna pick up a lot, but the grass at this park is seldom short. It grows till it's like a foot, foot and a half tall, and they come in with weed whackers, and that's a concern for a lot of people in the community, just because of the nature of that without a fire, so, uh, I mean, you're not gonna put any cars in here, but I mean, it's a, that's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a hold on this because we're getting off topic from questions related to Honolulu Police Department. And it's, it's gonna possibly be brought up later on with other, um, representatives of other offices. Um, at this time, I'd like to also, I'd like to start, uh, recognizing members of the community. Um, Bob, I believe your hand was raised for a while. Did you have any questions for Honolulu Police Department?
Uh, no, uh, my hand was up because I, I had another suggestion that related to the disaster, uh, uh, possibility, but I'll, I'll move on. Um, I, I did have a question that was not only for the police department, but more broadly for, um, the city, uh, regarding traffic safety, uh, in the lower Manoa area, specifically Metcalf Avenue. And, um, my, my concern there was, uh, as I've lived nearby for the last fifteen years, I've observed, uh, quite an, uh, increase in not only the volume of traffic there, but the different types of vehicles that are now motoring up and down at various rates of speed, and uh, this was highlighted last year when my, my son was broadsided by a vehicle traveling down Metcalf Street, uh, at a high rate of speed, and he was trying to turn left coming out of our street in a cute place. And, uh, fortunately, uh, you know, no, no critical injuries, but the car was nearly totaled. And I realized that the only way that could happen was that that car coming down was speeding. And as I walk my dog there daily, I do see, uh, quite a few problems on Metcalf, and I was sharing, uh, with Chair Zane, once upon a time, about five years ago, Metcalf and McCully were part of this Complete Streets project. And I, I don't know if people, uh, in attendance tonight recall that, uh, but once upon a time, we, uh, we were invited to a meeting at Alawai Elementary School and asked to submit suggestions for a draft plan to make more complete the, uh, the major thoroughfare that has become Metcalf to and between University Avenue and the McCully Bridge. And I didn't know, uh, how or where to go to, to seek an, uh, an, an update on the Complete Streets plan to find out where we are with that. It's been five years, and it seems to have lost track as it was initiated in the former administration's time. So that's my question to the group, is do we know what might be going on with the Complete Streets effort?
I'm not sure if, um, Lieutenant, you can answer this if you have any idea, um, if, um, but this question, we're gonna hold, you can always bring this question up again, Bob, when, um, uh, Kim, who is the representative for Mayor Belangiardi's office, uh, whose turn is gonna come up next to speak, uh, and give us updates, you can, um, present this question to her as well. And Kim, if you're listening, um, that may give you a heads up on what to respond back to Bob's concerns are.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Lieutenant?
Uh, I haven't heard personally, again, with the, uh, Complete Streets project, um, I can, I can look into it and examine inquiries. I haven't heard of anything. But I'm new to the district, so I will look into it.
Thank you Lieutenant. Any other, um, members of the community?
Sure. Uh, just the number for the community policing team that you had asked for. It will be eight oh eight, seven, two, three, 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 five, four.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Appreciate you providing that number for us, and
Sure.
Hearing and seeing no other, um, hands raised or inquiries for the Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant, thank you very much for your time.
Chair, can I ask a question, please, for Lieutenant, uh, Miro?
Oh, uh, Judy?
Yes. Sorry, I just wanted to ask, was there any safety, um, tips for the month of September?
Yes.
You wanna report? Thank you.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so protection safety is always a, a big thing, so the tips we have will be, when prepared to cross the street, do not assume that since you can see the vehicle, the driver can see you. It is far safer to assume that the driver does not see you, and make sure you have eye contact before, uh, proceeding. Secondly, even when you have the right of way, be prepared to yield to an approaching vehicle. Um, personally, I always say that even though you have the green light, that doesn't mean it's safe to go. I always personally check left, right, make sure it's safe to go before I start, um, proceeding. That's all.
Thank you very much. At which time, hearing and seeing no other hands raised, uh, we'll be moving on. Again, Lieutenant, thank you very much for your time. We're moving on the agenda to, um, Kim Sparland, Mayor Belangiardi's representative. Kim, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I got my computer to work. There's progress. Woo! Um, thank you so much, and, and yes, I've heard, uh, everything that's been discussed here this evening. Couple of things, and then I'll go, I'll go into specifically into, uh, the, the two major issues that I hopefully can provide some insight into, um, and then we'll, I'll follow up with, and then, um, open it up to questions from there. So, in the chat, I put in the mayor's newsletter. You'll see in there, um, mayor's comments on the devastating wildfires, um, not only in Lahaina, but in upper uh, Maui as well. Um, let's not forget all those that were impacted throughout that. Um, here on Oahu, of course, mayor's concern is safety. Uh, he says that in every cabinet meeting we have, he says that, I'm sure to HPD, to HFD, to EMS, um, to all of us, and so we're proud to say that, you know, on Au- August third, we were able to open a new lifeguard tower out at the Kahai Point Beach Park. Um, it's the first one in eleven years. It's a new tower that's been going up. This is in response to some of the sunup to sundown as well, um, as just where, where we're seeing, uh, the most rescues needed, so um, we're working on it. Uh, it, it takes time to get these things done, but we're, we're happy to announce that. Um, you should have seen in the news as well that there is a new liquor commission administrator, so you can read about him and his experience in the newsletter as well. Um, if you're interested, there's also, um, some information about Verona. This is a pro- Verona Village out in Eva Beach. I know it's a little bit outside of the scope here, but you may have some uh, family members that are impacted by that. It's a, it's a thirty-two-year project, I believe. Um, council members say, I don't know if you remember the full history on this as well, but I believe it's about a thirty-two-year promise that's finally being made to the folks that, um, had worked in the plantations and their descendants that, um, are gonna be able to afford some housing and take, you know, um, take advantage, not really take advantage, get, um, get what they were promised, so we're happy to say that that is moving forward, and we've been able to finalize the last of the, the sticking points through that. Um, and I have unfortunate news for member Kowano. I didn't get a full answer back from DPP, so we're still following up on that with regard to what to, what the next step is in the process for projects that have a revocable permit, you know, to their monster homes that you guys have been so diligent and, um, advocating for your community on. So, as, as you've seen, that DPP, when they do have concerns, will review and will revoke the, uh, the authority that those, those third-party reviewers have, um, and there is uh, discussion and resolutions in front of the council, um, to increase the fines for some of these businesses as well. So you're absolutely right. We hear you. If they're acting in bad faith, we wanna go after them. You know, slapping a two thousand dollar a day fine on a, a project that's gonna be making, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more, um, is just not really the way that we wanna go protecting our community. So we do hear you. Um, but I don't necessarily have that final answer on like what you can do if a, a permit has been revoked and you know it, other than continue to call, um, those numbers, continue to report it through the website like we've talked about in the past. For the Alawai Flood Project, member Fukumoto had asked about the, um, status of the next public input meeting, and unfortunately, there has been a delay with the Army Corps of Engineers, um, for their study, and they'll be releasing that uh, hopefully later in the fall, um, and they're working on providing an updated schedule, so the website has been updated to say, you know, to no longer say that there'll be something in August. Um, I did talk specifically and directly with, uh, Director Millis on this. Um, and so please just continue to follow, uh, follow along, sign up for those updates so that you can get them, and you'll probably get them faster than I will, um, be able to distribute them through these, these mediums. And then with respect to member Watson's question about the real property tax, just a little bit of a clarification in the math, right? So it's not a three percent cap. It has to do with gross income on the title holder, and there's a couple of things that go into the math. That's why it's not a, uh, it, it sounds different when you ask about a three percent cap, because that's not technically the way that the math works. Um, so the credit is based on applicant's current year's property tax less three percent of the gross income of all title holders of the property. Um, so again, it's not the, there's not a cap. Um, it's just, it's, there, there's a formula that goes along with that. Um, with respect to wildfires, you know, this is something that we, we definitely spend a lot of time.
What's the formula again? What's the formula?
It is. Um, it is. The credit is based on the applicant's current year's property tax less three percent of the gross income of all title holders on the property. Is what was reported.
So basically, if I understand it, then whatever the current, uh, tax is for the year, it's minus three percent of the income, so if you have a high property tax, which they're all artificially blown up and high in twenty-twenty-three, then minus the three percent, you're still gonna have a really high tax, right, so? Right? Because in twenty-twenty-three, they just went went nuts and increased the property tax somewhere between five hundred thousand and eight hundred thousand.
And that is based on what was, you know, in the, in the stat, in the ordinances, so they're, they're trying to adjust for that. Um, I'm gonna put a link in the, uh, chat as well, and then I don't know if, um, if Judy, do you want me to send that to you so it can be included in the notes as well? Um, so that you can see the, a little bit more information on it and how, how that works out. Okay, I'll put that in there. Um, you know, with respect to the wildfires, it's definitely something that we're talking about, our Department of Emergency Management, which, um, thank you, member Fukumoto, for, uh, bringing up Dr. Ireland. He does a lot around here. Um, but he just does emergency medical services, so your, uh, and ocean safety, believe it or not, those two things are put together. So your ambulance, um, and your ocean safety lifeguards. Um, he, uh, Doc, uh, Director Harold Toya is in charge of a very small crew, less than a dozen people, in our Department of Emergency Management. And they are currently supporting the wildfires, learning from that, and will no doubt bring some of that information back, um, throughout the, the next several months, if not, you know, could be up to a year that we're supporting that for them based on some of the information that's coming out, so um, we are gonna get better from that. I do want to provide some information as well after I put this link in here that I promised. Um, there's a, there's a nonprofit organization called Klean, and it's K-L-E-A-N. It's the Kapale Local Emergency Action Network. And it's businesses and individuals that came together, much like you guys are discussing, there's a concern in the area for evacuation, whether it be because of chemical issues, chemical spills in the area because it is highly industrial, whether it's tsunami because of the, the flood plain there, whether it's fire, given again, some of the industrial, um, properties there. And so they came together, and this was many, many years ago, and it takes a while to put this together, but they have come up with, um, evacuation plans, they've come up with different scenarios, they worked with HPD, HFD, um, emergency management, and a lot of the businesses in the area um, devoted their staff time to this as well. in order to come up with this plan. So when you go to the website, and I don't know if, I, I don't want to spend too much time on this because I want to make sure that we have some time for questions. But there's things on here that talk about, um, survival kits, evacuation routes and safety checklist. So it's really a wonderful website. So folks can stay informed on the best way to help themselves, you know? We see that the, we saw through COVID, we see through the wildfires, it's communities coming together and helping each other out the most. The police, the fire department, they can't be everywhere and everything to all people. And so we really got to rally together. And the more that we can do this and come up with these plans, they're gonna take time, um, for sure. I think this effort probably took five years to put this together, frankly. Um, and I know that's not timely enough right now, given everything that we're going through, but just want to make sure that, um, you know, that we're not just pointing the finger back at HPD and HFD and, um, that we really rallied together to come up with, uh, ways to keep our community safe. So speaking of safety, Mr. Benham, um, I heard your, your concerns about speeding specifically in Metcalf. I think we had someone else talking about Manoa Road either earlier today or in a previous meeting as well. Um, and I know you, uh, Chair, you kicked that back to me, but I'm honestly gonna have to kick that back to HPD, right? So anytime somebody's doing anything illegal, that's where we're gonna, that's where we're gonna refer to. Um, so I commit to working with them and getting, you know, some, some dialogue around this and to see what we can do. And I'll work with Councilmember Say so that we're all on the same page, um, and see what we can do, uh, to, to. Again, the police can't be everywhere. You guys have to, to call to let them know. Um, and that doesn't help when, when the, the moment is dangerous. I, I understand that. So let us, let's go back and, and have those discussions and then come back to you next month if, if you don't mind.
Thanks, Kim. Um, does any members of the board have any questions for Kim? Patty?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hi, Kim. I just wanted to tell you thank you for following up on the monster home issue. Um, we really appreciate your time and effort and, um, also pre-express our thank you to, um, um, Director Apuna for her effort. And I know she proposed a heavy fine and I think that's a good start to, to, um, really hold them accountable so that they can follow the building call. So again, mahalo for your help. Thank you.
And thank you for your advocacy, really.
Any other members? Uh, Elton?
Uh, yes, Director Sparland, thank you for, uh, answering my question before I asked it, um, which was obviously, yeah, who, who exactly was in charge and you just let us know. So, uh, thank you for anticipating my question and, uh, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, let's see. Any other members of the board? Members of the community? Ben? Uh, Bob, sorry, Bob.
Okay, thanks again for the opportunity. Uh, I appreciate the response about the speeding issue and, uh, but I also wanted to inquire a little more deeply about the status of the Complete Streets project as it might pertain to Metcalf Street between University and McCully Bridge. And who would I ask about that? As we, we seem to have lost track of, uh, a specific plan that was targeted to address many of the needs for pedestrians, bicycles and so on and so forth, up and down that hill in particular.
So, uh, Kim, would you like me to respond?
If you don't mind, I'm also gonna look up the Complete Streets website, um, see if I can find anything specific there.
Bob, the person that I've been dealing with is, uh, Ms. Rene Espial of the Department of Transportation Services. And for the District Five that I do represent, we've addressed the, uh, Keamoku Street as a big street of complete streets, Pensacola and Peacoi. But they are looking at other portions of the, uh, island for other, uh, sites to do this study as far as complete streets. But we can follow up both Kim and I. And it's the person's name, Rene Espial. Very, very diligent.
Um. Espial, okay. I will also, um, note that this has been brought up in a meeting so that there has been community interest in making sure that this gets elevated in some of that priority as well. I think that's the process rate is, they can only do so many things at a time and so they have to have that community feedback. And then they also have, um, criteria that they use in order to determine, uh, the order. So I can, I can find out what those details are and I'll work with Rene on that. Um, and then in the meantime, I'll go ahead and in the chat, put the Complete Streets, um, just the general website right now, um, so that you can see that. And then as we, we talk a little bit more, if I can dig into it and find out more specific for Manoa, I'll put more specific pages in there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the community have any questions for Kim? I'm not seeing any right now. Kim, um, can you please, um, I know that I've been getting requests for a way to contact the mayor's office via the phone. Can you give me a phone numbers, uh, put in the chats that way you could, um, they can, uh, I can pass that along?
Sure. I don't even know the mayor's phone number. Isn't that awful? Good lord.
Oh, no, 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 not the mayor.
No, the office, yeah, yeah. I shouldn't, I should know that.
And, uh. Lieutenant, uh, Zemura, if you could also, um, add in the chat, the number you, you provided at the end of your presentation as well, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
We'll move on on the agenda to Councilmember Say.
Okay, thank you very much, Robert, and I'll be very brief. I think Kim did an excellent job in, uh, recaptating what we have been doing the past month. Let me start off by saying for Bob Benham, you're correct that, uh, we had a call in August of last month, the twenty-seventh, in regards to the speeding of seventy to eighty miles per hour down Manoa Road, East Manoa Road, University Avenue and Oahu Avenue. So HPD is aware of the request that we also made to the, uh, department. Uh, I'd like to highlight some of the capital improvement projects for the residents and, and the board members. First one is the Manoa Street, Olua Street. It's a construction phase going on in regards to flood control improvements. And that was being improved by Bill's Engineering Hawaii Works. And, and the, uh, project is about eighteen percent completed and it was at a cost of one point five million. And the stabilizing drainage outlet is at the address of twenty-seven forty-eight. Manoa Valley District Park Project Order Pending Notice to Proceed. It's gonna be for gymnasium number two and the multipurpose building roof improvements. I also had calls in regards to the tennis courts where some of the residents were concerned about some of the growth of grass on the tennis courts and we are looking into it to see if we could do some major, uh, improvements or remediation to the court. Also, there was a call in regards to the Upper Street or the Lower Road, as they call it, at, uh, Manoa. And that one is being also worked on at this point in time. For those who love to go and swim at the Manoa District Park Swimming Pool Improvements of twenty twenty-four, improvements are the replacement of the pool's underwater pool lights and the electrical system pumps to be replaced by Norresco Contractor. And for the residents up at Woodlawn Area Drive, this is the Earth Monit- Monitoring Ongoing Stabilization Phase Two of Manoa and it is being done by Twenty Twenty Geo Labs, Inc. Long-term issues, I think we're trying to address how we can address the issue in regards to the Manoa property of Mr. Wong, Paradise Park. Uh, there'll be a presentation in regards to the Alawai Flood Management Project. And finally, back to school, we've had calls in regards to the traffic on the Oahu Avenue overall, et cetera. So those are some of my issues that, uh, we wanted, I wanted to share with you. And yes, there's, uh, constituents in regards to the monster homes at Kalay Road. We have the issue in regards to overgrowth of property in Manoa. And finally, the other mon- monster home by this, uh, individual up in Manoa also. The contractor needs permits and stamp plans and the Department of Planning and Permitting Inspector answered that the case is closed. They have gotten their permits. But I would say this to all of you. The best approach to addressing monster homes and all these other issues is just contacting us and then we could be the ones to contact the department also if you want to remain anonymous. So at this point, it's been a very, uh, I would say very exciting two, three weeks because of Lahaina. But more importantly, as a community, as a state, we've all come together in support of our family and friends in Lahaina. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I believe Helen or Dave will talk about another issue that they wanted to, uh, do for the Manoa residents and the valley itself, which is dealing with the park.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You're welcome, Robert.
I'm going to open it to members of the board. Joan, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I, I have a concern. Uh, when they're doing the, uh, repair of the lights at Manoa Pool, it would be maybe a good time to resurface the bottom of the pool, which is crumbling, actually crumbling and has been for years. Uh, so I, I just would like to see them look into that.
Well, let me go and check into it, Joan, because if the project has already been solicited for a contractor, there is a dollar amount, you know, as far as what will be replaced. But I can bring it up in regards to the flooring of the pool. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, it's just peeling off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Patty, your hands up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hi, Calvin.
Hi, hi, good to see you again.
Hi. Hi, same here. My questions relate to, um, Pohor Ridge that you, you and Andrew also attended the Chang Ho meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago. And we heard from the developer and the plans and you heard a lot of concern about the traffic problem. And that would impact the lower Manoa area, um, I guess Sing Louis Side or, or Yili Roll, that, that specific area. Um, what would your recommendation be for the community if they have concern? Like, what's the next step? I didn't get a chance to ask that question. Um, you know, I, I got cut off from, by the developer. So I know there's a couple of lower Manoa residents on the meeting today and I wanted to, um, just ask the question for them. What can they do? Or what's the next step? What's the timeline? Thank you.
The next step, I would say is that contact the consultant for the traffic study. And that particular consultant, Patty, I believe everyone would know with Mr. Shimokawa and others, would be the Austin Sutsu Mi Group.
Yes.
Contact them about the concerns that you may have, starting from not just Oylai Road, but from Kapilani, where we have the storage facility, all the way towards the, uh, entrance to our freeway. Because yes, the speeding that has occurred is a little worrisome for all of us. But, uh, earlier, like we talked about it, it's happening throughout the county that individuals are just speeding much more faster than it was before. Excuse me, my wife is just coming home.
Oh, sure.
Okay, she's coming.
Yeah.
Okay, but that would be number one, Austin Sutsu Mi. And you can try to talk to the architect or the engineer or the planner who is doing that particular study on behalf of Pohor Ridge Group.
It sounded like.
Yes, please.
Sorry. It sounded like they, um, and I didn't caught that, I didn't catch the point until someone pointed it out to me. They did the traffic study two years ago, which is doing COVID. And you know that there's like no school, no work. So we feel that the traffic study is a lot, a little bit skewed by, by the fact that nobody was traveling, nobody's driving. Um, the other question for your, um, suggestion will be, if we reach out to the traffic engineer, is this the developer's responsibility or would it be the DOT's responsibility to redesign the whole traffic flow?
I would say this, it would take all three parties. When I say all three parties to the board members and residents, it's not just the developer, but also DPP, DTS, which is Department of Transportation Services, and the State Department of Transportation. So DOT is state, DTS is city. And also the, the, uh, planner from the Department of Planning and Permitting, along with all the residents who are concerned about the traffic. So your input could be, you know, given at that point in time.
Okay, so go through their traffic engineer and not.
Yeah, and if you want to, I'll be happy to help organize it along with, uh, Andrew in getting our engineers from those respective departments.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Yeah, if you and, um, Andrew can help us with that, because honestly, I'm a little confused of who owns what role. You know, the city and the federal and the state, um. You know, I'm not knowledgeable in that area and I would really appreciate yours and Andrew's, um, knowledge and help. Um, and also because they're going through HHFTC's two oh one H program, is this time, would, would it be a good idea to reach out to them and express a concern?
Yes, to all parties, you should. Even HHFTC, because they are the state agency that approves the two oh one H. When it comes to the city, they're asking for exemptions or waivers to make it a affordable project. And that's where, you know, the past year, we've made a request to the legislature. Instead of just giving the council forty-five days, we were asking for more days so that we could really analyze the project.
Hi, Patty. This is Janelle from Councilmember Say's office. Um, I just wanted to clarify that there are, there are two accepting agencies. One is DPP and one is the HHFTC. Um, we don't know who they're submitting to yet and it may depend on what their affordability rates are and what they're offering. Um, usually they have to go through the city first and then if they do not meet, meet the city requirements, they go to the HHFTC. It's a very confusing process even for us. So like, anybody who's not dealing with this every day, it's just, uh, it's a lot of information. So please contact us if you have any questions um, or if you need to reach out to the developer and need their contact information.
Okay, thanks, Janelle. Um, I did get a confirmation with HHFTC. They, they did receive their application a month ago. And I, um, I felt like that's the route they're going because it, HHFTC is a rule, um, there's no sunshine law or, which is very concerning to everybody where they're suspending the law and they can just do whatever they want behind the scene. So I don't want to take too much time. Um, I'll, I'll work with you folks on the side, but I want to thank you for your time and your help on this.
And I wanted to say, also Patty, that Brandon's been in, you know, charge of seeing that particular, uh, issue be addressed.
Yes, yeah, he's been very helpful. Thank you.
But I will follow up. Janelle, you're there along with, uh, Melvia and Brandon and Judy that, uh, will follow up with the two departments, one with the state and one with the city and county of Honolulu on Department of Transportation issues. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Robert, yep, go right ahead.
Yep. Um, Ellen?
Hi.
Hi, um, just, I guess my question or my concern was the grass around Manoa District Park. In the park itself is really, they're not mowing it like they used to. They used to like mow it once a week and now it's like once a month. And up by the tennis courts, by the parking lot, the grass is just so long. I mean, it goes up to your knees, you know? And there's a lot of trash blowing around there and it seems like nobody's picking it up. And I know before, um, Labor Day, the trash cans were overflowing and so, you know, ahead of the holidays. So I don't know what's up with that, but it sure used to look a lot better uh, in years past. So I don't know if their lawn mower broke or what.
Ellen, let me go and find out and get back to you next month on it. I, I do believe that we had a new, uh, park manager there also. So, you know, with the turnover that occurs or the transfers, but, uh, I'll follow up on that particular issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Elton?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, good evening, Councilmember Say.
Good evening.
So in your remarks, you mentioned, uh, Paradise Park, Mr. Wong, and also you mentioned the, um, the Alawai Flood Control Project. Could you go over that again? Is there a prospective meeting or something or?
The Alawai Flood Management Project. The Aloha Flood Management Project, there is a Talk Story Meeting on September thirteenth.
Okay.
At 1:30 to 3:00 PM. And it is to explore the latest data visualizations on the Aloha Plus Dashboard, including sea level rise and other models underway, relevant to the Aloha watershed and broader region. Workshop feedback will guide grant research and funding opportunities to further build out useful data tools for the Aloha watershed project.
Okay, thank you.
Elton, excuse me.
Posting that.
Okay, we'll get that for you folks on the, who's, who's doing it. And, uh, we'll post it in the chat or we can send it to you directly. Ellen, would you like a copy also? Or else would, uh, Janelle or Melvia, would you know when the date? Not the date, but the, uh, who's organizing this particular or event? Okay, they don't know right now, but it is in the report that I have here. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Moving on to members of the community, uh, David.
Yes, um. Yeah, uh, the town hall meeting.
Yes.
The representative for the developer said that they would provide a copy of the TIR to our concerned citizens, especially in the sub, subzone four. They also mentioned that they had done a preliminary submittal to the DOT and DTS. If that's a preliminary, preliminary TIR, I hope we can get a copy of that as well as whatever they're going to submit to, um, the Hawaii Development Foundation so that we can examine it and participate in the review of it as citizens that are nearby and affected directly by the, uh, project. Um, I am concerned, very concerned regarding how much the DOT, especially because they respond to Foholai Road, will, uh, provide that input. I also did have a conversation with PBR Hawaii at the town hall meeting that since they are involved with the development and the design of the facility as to what issues would come about. And particularly if, uh, the facility doesn't have enough, what they call throat, to accept, uh, deliveries, um, visitors, and even loading and unloading, that it would cause a backup onto Wai La Avenue. And it seems based upon the drawings that I saw, um, that, yeah, they, they would have a problem. So that's a design factor that, that needs to be considered, which, which is not considered during a TIR. So, um, those, those numbers in TIR need to be reviewed in terms of also with the facility, how the facility is designed that affect the, um, traffic. And then one final point was the pedestrian, uh, aspects of the location of the site and the route that children who attend both either Hokulani or Kuiho School would have to take with or without their parents. Uh, it's pretty security, kind of dangerous. Um, so those are the things that come into the TIR. And I hope we can get a copy of those two documents, the preliminary TIR as well as whatever TIR they're going to have and to make a form as part of the formal submittal.
David, David, can you tell me the requests?
Say it.
Can you email that request or put it in the chat?
Sure.
That's all.
I'll send it to your office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, Joanne.
Thank you. Just, uh, um, thank you Chair, thank you Councilmen. I just have a quick question. Um, it's a follow-up question to one that was already asked about. What is the, uh, connection, um, between the Aloha, um, flood control project and the, um, Paradise Park property?
There is, there is no connection to that. Uh, I, I, I'm trying to see if the state or the county or any other state or county agency may be interested in acquiring those properties that are part of the Aho Pua. So what I'm saying to you this evening is that I am in discussion with the staff to determine if we could acquire the Wong property. The University of, the University of Hawaii has the Lions Aberitum up there, where we have a lot of volunteers. And the biggest issue that residents of Manoa has stated to me is that the pot, the road to the Lions Aberitum and to the falls has a lot of potholes. And whose responsibility is it? The city is saying it is not our responsibility, but you, Mr. Wong, and the Department of Transportation and the university and others saying, yeah, Mr. Wong. So to try to resolve this problem, I thought that would be a great idea. We have about five different agencies that own property up at the area that we're talking about. So it's the Wong family, it's the University of Hawaii, it's the Border Water Supply, it's the Department of Land and Natural Resources with their forestry program. And that's why I'm just trying to coordinate everything if there is interest in somebody, if we have the opportunity of acquiring the Wong property, manage the whole Aho Pua. That's all it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the community who has any questions for Councilmember Say? Hearing, seeing none. Thank you very much, Councilmember Say.
Thank you very much to all.
We have a member cough.
I just want to thank you, uh, for what you're saying. And I think it's a remarkably good idea if the city can buy that property. I, I really, I want to encourage it, uh, if you can do it.
Well, Joan, it's not just going to be the city, but also the state of Hawaii with their legacy land funds that they have, the Trust for Public Lands.
That's terrific.
If we could, you know, utilize that funds along with the city's clear, clean water funds, maybe we could do it. That's all I'm trying to.
Oh, that's marvelous, just marvelous. I wish you good luck with that.
Thank you.
At this time, well, before we move on to, uh, the state monthly reports, uh, I was notified by Judy that we do have a quorum at this time. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to strongly encourage and almost and really insist that everybody who's a member of the board, please stay throughout the end of the meetings. That way we can get through items that would definitely need a vote. In the meantime though, I'm going to call, now call on Senator Fukunaga or anybody from her office.
Hi, my name is Alec Yukeda. I'm on here on behalf of Senator Calhounaga. I just, I'm here to report that her monthly newsletter, um, should have been distributed, um, to you. And if not, we will, it should be by tomorrow. And, um, I'll be here to listen to any questions or concerns that you may have, uh, for Senator Fukunaga.
Thank you, Alec. Um, members of the board, any questions for Senator Fukunaga's office? Joan, is your hand still raised for, um, Senator Fukunaga's office? I take that as a no. Um, any members of the community? Hearing, seeing none. Alec, thanks for sharing that with us. Um, just in case anybody else has questions for Senator Fukunaga's office, please, um, at least stay on the call on the Zoom con, the Webex conference, sorry.
Yeah.
Next we'll move on to Representative Garrett.
Good evening Chair, uh, board members, members of the community. Great to see everyone here. Um, I don't have a formal written report this month, but I just wanted to pass along some things related to the, uh, the tragedy on Maui with the wildfires. You know, we have received some inquiries if we're going to convene a special session as part of a response to what's happened over there. Uh, as far as I know, the plan is not to have one, uh, but our House leadership is in close discussions with our Senate counterparts as well as the governor to see, um, if that might be necessary at some point. Um, it does require either the governor to call us back or two thirds of each chamber to initiate a special session. But we just want to be sure that, um, you know, if there is a special, special session called, that we have something concrete to respond to. We don't want to do just like a feel-good thing that doesn't accomplish anything. So, you know, at this point, we're kind of deferring to the governor to see if he has something specific to share with us that might help accelerate the, uh, recovery of Lahaina specifically. Um, and related to that, uh, you know, the House today, this afternoon, did announce the formation of several interim working groups. Part of this is to try to get ahead of, um, the 24 legislative session to prepare any kind of legislation or, um, something that might be necessary to assist with the, with the restoration of Lahaina. So as part of that, um, there's several, uh, interim working groups, um, tied, tied to wildfire prevention, um, energy and the environment. There's also some regarding food and water systems. Um, I'm wanting to report to this board that I was actually named as the co-chair of the Jobs and Business Subcommittee or the Working Group. So I'm going to be co-chairing this effort with Representative Holt, who is the Chair of our House Economic Development Committee. So we're going to be hearing from a lot of the various agencies as to what's happening with the employment situation on the ground. We know the FEMA has, has a very strong presence there and a set of disaster recovery centers. Uh, they've launched a program called the Disaster, uh, Disaster Uninsurance or Unemployment Assistance Program, DUO for short. But we know that's not going to be a long-term issue. And right now, there's a lot of discussions about, um, striking that appropriate balance between being sensitive to the, the people that have been impacted by this so that are, you know, taking their time grieving as we can, uh, appreciate. But also recognizing that, you know, we do need to try to jumpstart the economy, um, to help people get back to work in some kind of a sense of normalcy. So this Subcommittee I'm working on, uh, we will be, um, meeting over the next several weeks and we'll, uh, be issuing a report hopefully by the middle of December with some recommendations to help the economic situation in West Maui. So with that, I'll just stop there in the interest of time and see if there are any questions.
Members of the board, any questions for Representative Garrett? Hearings, oh, um, Elton.
Uh, yes, uh, hello Representative Garrett.
Elton.
Yeah, so, um, my concern is with wildfire prevention in Manoa and what can be done. So these are committees that are informally set up and do they hold informational briefings at which you collect, uh, data and then write your report based upon them? I guess that's one part of the question, is, is this how it works? And number two, um, this, this wildfire prevention, is, is that a Subcommittee dealing with, um, issues in the future? Not, not looking back at Lahaina, but recognizing that all sorts of, um, uh, the, the line of fires proved one thing, and that is that there are a lot of neighborhoods, uh, in our state that are at risk of perhaps some similar things happening because of climate change and so forth. Um, and, and so would this committee be addressing those future issues? Or, or present or future issues?
Yes, um, very much so. So first question regarding, um, informational briefings. The co-chairs have been given latitude on how they want to run these meetings. I'm, I'm all about transparency. So, you know, I hope we do. Um, all the committees will commit to having, um, publicly noticed meetings. But as you know, unfortunately, the legislature is exempt from the sunshine law. So I can't speak to what some of my colleagues might do. Uh, your second question regarding wildfire prevention, yes, it is going to be looking forward. I know this is an issue that's, um, you know, top of mind for some folks in Manoa as well. You know, we recall the, the brush fire above, uh, Noialani Elementary School. Excuse my, my dog here. Um, so we know it's, it's a, a top of mind issue and that we, there might be things that we can, steps we can take to prevent it. So again, the name, the name of the committee is Wildfire Prevention. So it is looking forward and seeing what kind of steps we can take to mitigate the impacts of climate change.
Thank you.
Member Lumen.
I just want to, uh, make a comment that I don't feel like we are, we have the equipment to fight fires and we're having more and more fires. There's been fires up on the North Shore the last couple of years. There's one up here just past Dole that's been going on for a while, the one over here behind UH. And all they have is a couple of little helicopters with like teacups dropping, going back and forth dropping water. Can't climb those things. So, uh, well, first of all, I wonder where the military was. They have huge helicopters and why weren't they, uh, helping out Lahaina? And are they an alternate or are they here to help or assist in the case of fire? And do they have, uh, buckets to pick up water? Because, uh, there's really nothing we can do. We just have to just basically let them burn out and have fire equipment standing at the edges of these places. And if a fire crosses over these ridges and gets to these old houses up on these ridges, it's a disaster. I mean, all these ridges, all these valleys are the same. And, and we're just, we got nothing to, to, to fight these things with.
Right. No, very well said. Um, so typically emergency response is a county function. So that's, you know, the state does have a very small firefighting force typically. You know, like maybe at the harbors area. Um, but with regard to the military, I think what was unique about the Lahaina fire was the fact that there were hurricane-level winds that essentially grounded the helicopters. I know there was a lot of discussion about, um, you know, the water, the State Water Commission, Sea Worm, Commission on Water, uh, what does it stand for? Well, can't recall right off the top, but, um, Water Resource Management, about them, um, denying a request from West Maui Land Company to fill up their Was of Wars to battle the fires. But as I, as I understand again, with the winds being 70 miles per hour, there's no helicopters that can fly in that kind of situation. So that might've been kind of a red herring issue. Um, but I think you're right, you know, as we're learning about Maui, you know, the, the size of their firefighting force. I mean, they're obviously stretched beyond capacity. They were fighting simultaneous fires, both in up country, Kula, Olinda, as well as, uh, West Maui and Lahaina. And they were just overwhelmed. So I think there's lessons to be learned here. Um, and I'm sure, you know, the appropriate people are doing the after-action reports to figure out how we can prepare for something like this in the future.
Apologies, I was, I was somewhat muted. So thank you very much. And, uh, one thing I, I'd like to ask Representative Garrett, um, as part of the, uh, le, uh, legislature coming up, if, um, you keep us informed of any bills related to, I guess, potentially combining, um, your work with, um, business rejuvenation and working to, uh, further curtail dry brush in areas like Manoa and other areas. Um, that might be, I, maybe we can, uh, work on something on, if you work on something like that, that'd be appreciated. And also considering, um, the economic impacts as well. I guess, um, trying to see further what we can do with, what the, what the legislature can do with supporting efforts to, um, I guess, housing as well as, um, trying to encourage tourism to go back to areas like Maui where they have, they are suffering a lot from the lack of business or the diversification of business on Maui, especially due to the, the tourism being scared, scared away after Lahaina's wildfire.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, happy to commit to that. So we'll keep you informed every step of the way.
Thank you. Any members of the community have any questions or comments for Representative Garrett? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much.
Yes, next month. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And we'll be moving on now to updates from University of Hawaii with, uh, Elmer.
Hello Chair, aloha members. This is, um, El Makai, University of Hawaii, Manoa. Um, I'm going to just, um, respond to, um, a lot of inquiries I had last month. Um, first one is regarding the status of Bachman Hall. Um, it actually, we will start moving folks back in, starting in November of this year. Um, the potential opening date is at the end of December of this year. Uh, so we'll start moving people back into, uh, Bachman Hall. In regards to Sinclair, um, there is a wide, um, um, work area right now so that we can determine the need. Because it, it is a historical building, we cannot change the facade of the, the original building. So it does need to take some time of where we need to, uh, stage folks, um, and, and develop it. So we don't have a, I don't have a timeline on the progress report of what, what's going to be done, but I'll have that as soon, soon as it's, it's available. Um, the next one was regarding the light poles on Kalelei Road near Kalelei. The light poles that is under responsibility to University of Hawaii, all of them are working properly. It is the, the light poles that is under the Department of Transportation. We are working with them to make sure that they can address that, those particular poles. They are nearer to the Wai La Road, um, entrance. Um, and with that, I just want to let you know that, as you know, our, our. And with that, I just want to let you know that, as you know, our our RISE building has is open. We have students in there already. If you can tell, there's a lot more mopeds than there are cars in the parking areas and so on. But again, that that particular facility is is run by the University Foundation. However, because there's a lot of UH students, whether it's from Manoa, all the other campuses, we have to make sure that there are appropriate needs in there regarding mental health, health and all of those. So we are providing that services. Outside of that, Chair, I will leave it up to the rest of the time for questions.
Thank you, Elmer. Members of the Board, any questions for Elmer, University of Hawaii? Hearing and seeing none. Members of the community have any questions or comments for Elmer and the University of Hawaii? I'm not seeing any either on that front. Elmer, I think you're good.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Chair, Chair, we have a hand from Glenn, what's a girl?
Sorry, it is Glenn. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Just a got a quick question. What's the status of the Atherton Project? The one on University Avenue? I noticed the the lights are finally on in the buildings over there.
So the Atherton is actually the RISE, the RISE report I just gave. It is actually open, with students in there. It is right, Atherton is part of, RISE is the organization that is using the facilities for programs, student housing and so on. So it is open, Glenn.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Oh, I I just got another comment. I I know a friend who lives out in Makiki. And you mentioned during the the last football game, I guess they have some really bright lights for their the display for the scoreboard, I guess. And from the area of Makiki, they can see this bright light coming straight from the stadium. Familiar or have heard about any complaints about that because someone did mention it somewhere on next door just the other day.
Okay, I I will check with the Makiki folks. And thank you for letting me know. That's a good question. And yeah, that is our, that is a scoreboard from the old Allo Stadium. Absolutely. Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, bye.
I also see that member Chong's hand is raised. Diane?
Thank you. I have a question, Elmer. The RISE is not part of the UH? Is that correct?
Yeah, it is run by, it is owned, the building is owned by UH Foundation. And there is a it is a managing company that actually runs the the facilities there. However, because there are UH students there, all the different campuses, there are the UH students from from both Kapua Lani or Honolulu Community College. All of our schools are involved to ensure that our students are taken care of regarding mental health, safety and so on. So that's where we're we're involved. But we don't get any of the, any of the proceeds. We don't pay any of that. That is run by
Do you know how many students live there that go to University of Manoa?
Oh, I I don't know that offhand. I can have it for you next month for sure. I do know that we have a several students that are also from Kapua Lani and Honolulu Community College like this. But I will find that out for you for sure.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We also apparently have a hand raised by Linda Legrand. Linda, are you there?
I am here. Thank you so much. Thank you, Elmer. You're so good about following up from month to month. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome. My my, I guess my comment is that the, is it Tamani Tree?
Yes.
It looks like it may have be coming back. Do you have a report on that for us? We're concerned.
Yeah, thank you very much. Actually, the Manoa Altus Circle really was made sure that we were unaware of that particular tree. We do have an expert, I don't know what you call them, that is monitoring that tree to ensure that it it stays healthy and move forward. And again, thank you very much for the Manoa Altus Circle for bringing that to our attention. Yes, we are, we're taking care of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Elmer, that's arborist.
Hi.
So the person that handles the trees are is an arborist.
Oh, arborist, that's right. That's the name. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Oh, Bev?
Yes. I just have a question for El. I was, I was thinking if you're looking for to me, is there a place on the University campus that we can rent for once a month or three hours?
Bev, I'm sorry, you're you're cutting in and out, so we're not quite able to hear you very well. And it looks like your feed's coming in twice on two different devices perhaps.
Can I raise?
Let me see if I can try to help you out with that.
Chair, Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Herodi was chopping my end too, but it sounded like she was asking if there's a place on UH campus that we can rent out for three hours a month. So I think she's asking if there's a place on UH campus that we can use as a venue for in-person board meetings.
Oh. Bev, is that what you were trying to go for?
Or any kind of meetings?
I'm I'm not, I'm not able to get a confirmation, but Elmer, if you can respond to that?
Sure. Simple question is yes. If if the board or any organization wants to do this, there is things that we have to make sure that that needs to be followed. But I can, you know, they all they need to do is call me and I can set it up for you. We did do that a couple of times for them, both Manoa and Makali Neighborhood Boards. As well as outside organizations. So if you guys do need someplace to meet, just let me know and I'll find someplace. At least that is, we do, because we're here, we are a wireless university. Our our website, our access to web is very, very good. So sure, yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's good to know. Appreciate that. Maybe we can coordinate with the Neighborhood Work Commission and see what, see if anything come out of that. Okay. Okay, I I see what Bev's saying, which is the Kapalama Hali address, which is currently on the agendas for the board. Nobody goes to that, which is understandable because it's City Hall versus somewhere in Manoa, which is a lot more accessible. So we've been having as, just as a bit of context for people who are joining us now, we've had some issues trying to get a venue since for this past year so far. We'll look into this, the board will look into this and we'll try to follow up on it either by the next meeting or the or the November meeting. So we can at least try to see if we can work out with with Elmer and UH about the potential of having board meetings over there. Maybe a hybrid Zoom and or or in-person meetings as well.
Right?
Yeah. Thanks, Elmer.
Welcome.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for University of Hawaii? Hearing and seeing none. Somebody catch me if I'm wrong. It looks like we're good now. Elmer, thanks, thanks again for your time.
Aloha. Take care, everyone.
We'll move on now to Governor Green's representative. The agenda has Francine Murray. Francine, are you there? Or anybody else from Governor Green's office? I'm not hearing anybody at this time. So I'm going to move on, if that's the case, to committee reports. So first up is the Alawai Flood Control Project. Does anybody have anything to report regarding the Alawai Flood Control Project?
Chair?
Yes. Ellen? Ellen, you're so muted.
Sorry, Elton would talk about the Alawai Flood Control Project. But at the last meeting, which didn't make it into our memorandum of record, but many things did not. We can't call this committee reports. We have no committees. And this should be ongoing board business because something may come up where we have a resolution or something that we need to take an action on. And so it really needs to be continuing board business. And MBC should be added to that. And maybe this Alawai Bridge that they're proposing should be on that. And it's just items on the, like standing items for a little bit of unfinished business because we'll have things come up that we'll have resolutions for and need to weigh in on. And so it really needs to be on the agenda already, just not as a reporting item, right? So can we call it unfinished business? Can can we list MBC and Alawai Bridge on there also going forward just for a bit?
Sure, I'm I'm putting I'm putting notes down for that right now, Ellen. And just to clarify what the acronyms NBC stand for? Just for everybody's clarification.
Manoa Banyan Court.
Manoa Banyan Court, thanks. Yeah.
Manoa Banyan Court Development and the Alawai Bridge, Pedestrian Bridge they're proposing. And I think those should just be ongoing business so we can take action on them for a little bit. You know, and when they become a non-issue, then, you know, we can remove them from that. But yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ellen. Elton?
Yes, and and once again to follow up. So Ellen was also saying, don't forget, the Alawai Flood Control Project should be a monthly listing as well. So when we met last month, we thought that the the Army Corps was going to have a preliminary meeting before issuing its SEIS Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement. We have learned today from health members say that that is going to be pushed back. Oh, I'm sorry. We we learned that from, did we learn that from Director Sparling? I can't remember now. But anyway, that report that was supposed to come out in August is now going to be issued later on in the fall. But whenever that is issued, the board needs to weigh in and we need to draft some sort of resolution. I think Ellen and I are ready to do that whenever it happens. But for now, it's been pushed off for a couple of months down the road. So that's, that's my report to the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Elton. Ellen, I believe you were the one who was doing the Primary Urban Center Development Plan. Do you have any reports on that?
Yeah, no, I mean, their final plan is issued and nothing has changed from that. And 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 they they see that we should have no condo or large housing developments. Malka of Wilder Avenue, and I think we all agree with them. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Moving on on the agenda, we're going to go now to community concerns. First up, we have an announcement from Friends of the Manoa Library regarding a fall book sale.
Chair?
Yes.
This is Elton again. This is, this is me trying to dominate this meeting. No, I'm just kidding. This is another item of mine. As you know, if if you live in Manoa, you know that there are, this is a semi-annual book sale. It's twice a twice a year that the Manoa Library and the Friends of Manoa Library have its book sale. So this year, the book sale is going to be about ten days from now. On Saturday, September sixteenth, from nine AM to three PM. And on Sunday, September seventeenth, from ten AM to two PM. And this is, you 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 cannot get a a better sale than this because every book is only one dollar, no matter how. Well, there there are some special books, but but basically every book is a dollar. It's almost like getting a free book. And then sometimes, sometime during Sunday, they actually cut the price in half. So you you can't get anything more reasonable than that. So if you ever want to increase your your book library or CD library, DVD library, this is the place to go. And it's it's approximately ten days from now at the Manoa Neighborhood Library, at the Manoa Library Meeting Room. Thank you.
Thanks, Elton. Let's see. We're gonna, I'm going to also now move on to the Malama Manoa announcements.
Hi, Chair. I'll just do a quick introduction. So last month, we talked about how Helen Nekano and some others were putting together a committee to try and do a Ginkerbol project in Manoa Stream. Long story short, in light of what happened on Maui recently, the committee has pivoted away from the Ginkerbol project, at least for now, and we're instead of going to focus on trying to get more trees planted in the valley. So there's going to be a presentation that that we're doing to encourage more tree growing at Malama Manoa's October, early October eleventh general meeting. But I'll turn it over to Helen now. She's on the call and she can give further information on that.
Sounds good. Hi, Helen. Ellen, you're so muted. Hold on, let me see if I can.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave, for, you know, helping us. But I want everybody here to come and listen to these two speakers that we have found for us. I've heard a lot tonight about the concern that this community has about the dangers of fire and evacuation and all of this. And it's real. The dangers are real. And the person that I am anxious to listen to is a man. His name is Dr. Camilio Mora. And he is a professor at the University of Hawaii. And he and his sixteen-year-old daughter who attends Mid-Pacific Heads, this nonprofit organization that they call Carbon Neutrality Challenge. Carbon Neutrality Challenge. And he is going to inform us of how us, each of us individually, can do something about what is happening as far as climate change is concerned to our health and safety. He's a nationally regarded, highly regarded speaker and writer. And he is very passionate about the fact that we are going to have to do something, all of us, to address climate change. And you know what he was going to talk about? He said, well, it's real. It's gotten real. And he was talking about the Maui disaster. And I would like to hear what he has to say about what we in Manoa can do, each of us individually can do, to address this carbon neutral challenge that he and his daughter started. So please come. The other person that is going to be speaking to us is Dan Dinnell, who is the president of The other person that is going to be speaking to us is Dan Dinnell, who is the president of Trees for Honolulu. So you have somebody who has a big vision of addressing climate change. And you have a person who has small vision. He said, we have to grow more trees, but it has to be the right tree at the right place and make sure that it fits the situation. Um so it's Wednesday, October eleventh. We've worked really hard. We have limited funds to advertise. But the pastor at the Seventh Day Adventist Church is allowing us to use his sanctuary to listen to those, these two individuals. So I invite all of you to come listen. You can disagree with them, but at least they're doing something. They're doing something. They are makers, they're doers, they're shakers, yeah. It's October eleventh. Um Dave, do you have the flyer in the chat? Could you make sure that everybody gets one of these copies? And if you believe or you're interested, please post them um to your network. Cause we need as many people to listen to them and to agree or disagree with what you hear. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Helen. Um at this time, along with questions for Helen, I'm going to open it up to other concerns by the community. So um I'm going to first recognize Laura.
Okay, thank you very much. Um I'm uh here today to tell you about a meeting that's going to be on Saturday. Uh starts at one thirty reception, and it's about community empowerment. And this is specifically uh about the uh design over the uh bridge over the canal that we really do not want to have. But it also on the nineteenth will be another great big meeting of all the Alaway watershed people. Um the meeting, I'll put things in the chat and you can uh put my email address too. The meeting on the ninth is at Alaway School Cafeteria, one thirty reception, two o'clock, uh the program begins. So I'm going to go through, this is very abbreviated, but you'll you'll see um uh exactly. This is, of course, you recognize Diamond Head, which is the premier uh natural.
Hold on, uh Laura?
Yes, uh huh.
Uh you're not show uh you're you're just your screen still. I'm gonna, I'm making your own presenter at this point, so if you have that presentation you were talking about.
Do you do you want me to share a screen?
Um if possible, I put I put.
Here we go, here we go, sharing, okay. Whoops, where'd it go? Here's, I'm sharing my screen, whoa, okay, are that, is that okay?
We can see, we can see at least two images right now on that screen.
Okay, that's right, okay, just to let you know, Diamond Head are uh natural monument. And we want to preserve the all of the view planes from everywhere, Manoa and everywhere else. And these are just historical photos and and painting. Uh you remember that the um uh once the Alaway area was uh rice fields and duck ponds and things like that. This is very, I have much more to say, but can't do it now. Look at Manoa going, um looking Maoka. Um and uh then this is looking Diamond Head from the McCully Bridge. Open ways, very um gracious-looking canal. And then in our own Alaway Park, we have a grove of trees, which uh are are very wonderful and welcoming. And they've been growing for a long period of time. Um and then we have the docks for the all of canoe um halal um members. And then the migratory um bird tree act, uh the koala koala's are protected species. And they um migrate every um every year. Um and I really enjoy listening to them because as they come in, they come in along the canal, above the canal. And they uh are doing their chirping. And it's they're uh either echoing on the canal or else they're echoing to their their fellow mates. And then they show up in the in the fields all around. The uh white terns, they um nest in the trees, they don't have actual nests, they just put their eggs on the branches. And they are, both of them are protected, the migratory um bird tree act. So then, and what I'm proposing is because we really don't want the bridge. And we have some reserve that, okay, a small modest footbridge that's ten feet wide, that looks like the other bridge in the Alanya, I'll show you just a second, is that this is just to show you what is possible. You may have seen other um views of the monster um um megastructure, um concrete and tower and stay cables and all. But these are modest ones, that that one Dublin has one, Iowa City has one. The bottom is the Alanya Bridge, it's only eighty feet across, but it uh it's right there on our bicycle path, ten feet uh wide. And uh something uh that's extended across the canal could be um a bridge. I just want people to know that these are the possibilities if a bridge has to be built. However, we'll we'll figure out whatever that is. So so anyway, I'll stop my screen share, and if I just have a minute, I just want to, although we probably can't see it. I I just want to show you, this is the flyer, some of you may have gotten it already. And it just shows the um the difference uh community meeting representatives. And um it's the Outdoor Circle, Shell Matson, uh Oahu Parks, Curvance Conservancy, uh Winston Welsh, Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board, myself, uh I'll I'll call all my neighbors, uh Dave Barber, McCully uh Neighborhood Board. And the meeting, meeting hosts are Senator Ihara and Senator Fukunaga. And then the legislative cosponsors are Senator Morawaki and um Representative Dela Al- Delati. So I'll put my email in the uh thing, it's the one thing is, it's critical that we have a large community uh uh coming together. Because this is the first step to bring all the community together. The second step is to bring the even wider community together with all of the major concerns. Every you folks all have the major monster houses concerns. We all have the uh Alaway flood control uh situation. Uh these are all the major problems that are we, and by bringing the community together, this is a a community empowerment. And we really want everybody to come. Uh it's, you don't feel like you have to say anything, just come and be, yeah, in your presence will make all the difference. So I'll put my email in uh the chat, and if you want to have a poster sent to you, I I and my press release, I'll be glad to do that. So thank you very much. Any questions? Anybody have a question?
I'm going, I'm going to move on at this point, Laura. Um if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to raise their hands throughout this period. Uh but next I, the next hand I see raised is Dana Harvey, Dana?
Hi, thank you Chair Zane and members of the board. Um I'm here to provide, I'm Dana Harvey from Alexander and Baldwin and with Manoa Marketplace. And I'm here to provide you with the courtesy update on the improvements at the marketplace. Um our work is coming to a close, and we really want to thank the community for your patience over the past few months. Um we hope you like the new improved common areas, uh more landscaping and the additional seating areas. Uh we expect to complete the renovation by the end of this month, uh when the last of the furniture will be delivered and installed, and we'll finish um some of the work on the second floor, including uh deck coating, of course, uh weather permitting. Um on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, we will transition the farmer's market from the Safeway parking lot back to the renovated courtyard. Um you know, surrounding shops, restaurants and services uh really benefit from the foot traffic from the farmer's market um in that original location and have asked when they will return. Um other tenants have inquired about the return of the parking spaces occupied by the market currently. Um so I'm also pleased to announce a new partnership with the Hawaii Farm Bureau to manage the farmer's market at Manoa Marketplace. Um the Farm Bureau and its Neighbor Island affiliates operate farmer's markets across the state. Uh they are experts at promoting and safely operating these kinds of markets. So all vendors, the ones you're used to visiting um three times a week sometimes, are now members of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. And they are going to be transitioning their product mix to one hundred percent locally grown produce and flowers. Um and they will have all the support of the Farm Bureau to source local products. Uh every one of the vendors who you've all come to know will be moving back to the improved location. And the hours of operation will remain the same, that Sunday, Tuesday and Thursdays from seven A M to two P M. Um so they will, sort of a soft opening on the twenty-eighth of this month. And then on Sunday, October twenty-eighth, uh Manoa Marketplace and the Hawaii Farm Bureau will host a um small but sort of special reopening event with uh some giveaways. So I hope you will all stop by. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Uh let's see, there's a lot of hands now raised as well. Uh Dave?
Uh I I didn't have a question for Dana, so you should do me last.
Okay, sounds good, Dave, I'll come back to you. Um Bree?
Hi, um I'm Bree and I'm a senior at Ponohoe on the cross-country team. And I was just coming on here tonight to announce and encourage those who are able to to participate in the Homeward Bound Three K. And this three K happens on Thanksgiving Day or November twenty-third in Manoa. And it supports and fundraises money to eliminate houselessness in our community. And we work in partnership with the Institute for Human Services or I H S. And the registration is linked in the chat, if there are any questions about that.
Thank you, Bree. Um Helen, I saw your hand was raised earlier.
Thank you. I just want to say, Dana, the marketplace is just wonderful. And I am just enjoying it. I thank you very much. Indeed, you did a fantastic job. Thank you, thank you, I just love it.
Appreciate that a lot, thank you.
Ellen?
Thank you, my question is for Dana. Um are you going to put the bulletin board that you used to have up, that was kind of like on the way to the post office by the tables there, it used to be on the wall? And the community could post things there, are you going to put that back?
You know, let me check on that. I I thought we were, but let me, let me, let me check on that, good question, thank you.
Cause they removed it and a lot of folks uh checked that, yeah, especially when you went to the farmer's market or the post office or whatever. And the community is just kind of, certain people have voiced that they'd like to have that back.
Okay, got it, we'll check on that, let you know.
Thanks, Ellen, uh let's see, I'm not seeing anybody else with hands raised or hearing anything. Dave? Oh, sorry, Hector, there's a Hector on the line, sorry Dave, cause you wanted to go last.
Uh Dana, I must compliment your company for such a beautiful job. But I am asking you constructively that the Manoa Stream neighboring the gas station, neighboring McDonald's, neighboring the uh veteran- veterinarian maintenance. It it is overgrown, it has not been cut in almost ten years. And it's something that I have a concern because should we have a heavy rain, we're going to be in trouble. So my suggestion is to take a look at it. I have taken photos of it from ten years ago to today. And it's really, it's really something that should be addressed in the near future because we may have a problem should it ever rain. That's it, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Uh Hector, thank you for your comments on that. That's been a recurring issue here on this board, so um stick around with us and probably either not Dana, somebody else from City and County or the city's gonna, gonna have to address the uh Manoa Stream issue at some point. Uh Linda?
Thank you, I'm wondering if Bree um from Ponohoe is still on? How do we get information about that five K?
Well, there was a three K, Bree? Or um.
I can answer that, sorry, I'm with them. Um.
Uh this is, sorry.
I'm Angie, hi, I actually work with I H S and I'm working with Bree and uh this is another junior, Kyle. So Homeward Bound Five K, we did it same place as last year at Manoa Valley District Park on Thanksgiving Day. It's at eight A M. Um I put a link in the chat, it's just homewardbound.fundraise.org. It is fundraiser, not fund-raised, there's no D.
Okay.
Um yeah, also on Instagram, it's out there. If you go on ihshawaii.org, it will soon be posted on the website. Um but yeah.
Thank you.
And the chat, they showed it is a five K, my mistake, I heard a three K somehow from, but I maybe that was just.
It's three miles, five kilometers. It's, yeah.
Thanks for correcting me on that.
And it is a fun run, and I encourage walking. So it's welcome to everyone, it's not timed, it's just a family get-together, community get-together um for the sake of raising money to end homelessness in our community. Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else? I'm not seeing anybody else or hearing anybody else, Dave?
Thanks Chair, um so I wanted to um kind of give the second half of um the presentation on Helen Nakano's agenda item regarding um getting more trees planted in Manoa. So um as you mentioned, we're going to be having that um meeting, which to reiterate, will be Wednesday, October eleventh, six P M to eight P M. And it'll be at the Seventh Day Adventist Church, uh the one that's on Manoa Road, so that's happening. But also further into the future, we're also looking at is getting groves of trees planted at uh Manoa District Park. So at the meeting held the other week, um Kelvin Say was there along with um his staffer of uh Melvia. And so we had a discussion about it, and essentially it it's a long process. We need to get permission to plant the tree and make sure uh from from the city, um Department of Parks and all. And we also need to get the tree added to the um the register of things that the city maintains. Cause otherwise, like if the tree gets knocked down or something, they're not going to um put it back up or do maintenance work on it unless it's properly registered as a thing for the city to maintain. So it's a whole thing of red tape that we have to get through. And the first step on um getting through that small mountain of red tape is that the neighborhood board has to give the uh project its blessing. So uh we don't have a resolution written right now. But one thing that we did talk about is in the future, maybe next month, um putting together a resolution of by our board, saying that we support the idea of planting additional tree groves in uh Manoa Park. So I just wanted to throw the idea out there that it's something that we might be seeing next month. And I also wanted to just um open the floor floor for discussion if anyone had any opinions for or against, or any suggestions about how to do it.
Thanks, Dave. Um just one thing on my, uh just personally for me is with that, I love the idea. I love the idea of more trees in Manoa Park. Um I just would ask um preferably something native and not monkey pot trees, just because of the mess that they tend to make and the issues that they cause. Everyone to have it more for like, um I guess preventing animals, small animals like dogs and other pets from eating monkey pots around or just have the mess that the monkey pots themselves create usually. That's just my own two cents on that topic. Ellen?
Thank you, um yeah, it would be nice to plant native Hawaiian trees. Yeah, I agree with um Robert that we don't want any more monkey pods. And I think we don't want any more kukui nut. Cause like by the stream, they have kukui nut trees, and then the trees drop their kukui nuts, right? And then the canoe kukui nuts rot, and they're on the walkway there, and people got to walk on them. It's a trip and fall waiting to happen, you know? Because you're letting this debris uh fall on there. And you know, there's a lot of seniors and a lot of kids and whatever there is. So you know, try to plant not a tree that will be a hazard. And native Hawaiian trees would be really nice, and you probably get good support for doing that. Um as as opposed to the pretend native Hawaiian trees, yeah.
Yeah, if if I could just.
Yeah, if if I could just
Yeah, Laura, go ahead.
Yes, I'm I'm in at the Moiliili Japanese Cemetery where I'm a co-ordinator. Um, we have been raising nine ohia trees. And you may say, oh, it's hot and low down there, but they're growing quite nicely. And uh, the main thing is they have almost no rubbish at all. And I think that you are in a slightly cooler elevation and you might find them very convenient, very easy. They need a little tending as they're small and growing up. And of course, uh, J C Watson is the expert. Um, so you want to talk to him.
Thank you for the suggestion. Um, I love the idea of the ohia trees too. Look, I'm hoping that's, I'm hoping that they don't get the disease. I I know they're beautiful. My I just hope that they can live, because I know that the ohia disease kind of ravaged the the populations. Okay?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
So good, so good to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, Laura. Um, anybody else have any comments on any of the issues that were discussed so far tonight and community concerns? I'm not hearing or seeing um, anything. Linda, is your hand still raised?
Yes, thank you. I had one uh, quick announcement that Malama Manoa is doing a stream cleaning, uh, meet at the Woodlawn Bridge. This is October the twenty first. But just, I wanted to put it out early so people can plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. If you can also put that in the chat, we would appreciate it.
Okay.
Hey, and anything else? Anybody else on any of the issues that were discussed and community concerns? There was a lot tonight, which is really great. If anybody catches something, let me know, but I'm not seeing anything. In which case, we're gonna be moving on to the next item on the agenda. Which is City and County Civil Division and Consultants Regarding Manoa Stream. So a lot of that Manoa Stream discussion, hopefully can they can also discuss this as well. Is anybody from the City and County Civil Division on this call right now?
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I'm Christie Ching with the City Department of Design and Construction Civil Division. And the project coordinator for the Manoa Stream at Kahaloa Drive Erosion Control Improvements Project. Um, thank you Chair Zane and members of the board for including us on your agendas tonight and allowing us to explain our project. We appreciate your interest in the project and the input that has been shared by the community. Our project consultant has put together a PowerPoint presentation for you. Before we start the presentation, I would like to have our project team introduce themselves. Starting with our project manager, Steve Harano. Steve?
Hi, I'm Steve Harano. I'm with Park Engineering. And like Christie said, we're the project um, PMs, design PMs. We're um, assisting this city, the design and construction. And we also have Emily Valenzuela, who's also with Park Engineering, but she's currently having some audio um, problems. So she's also joining us. And we can move on to um, our consultant, Fukunag and Associates.
Uh, thanks, Steve. Um, my name is Lance Fukamoto. Uh, I'm with Fukunag and Associates. Uh, we're also part of the design team. Uh, and I believe we also have uh, John Nishimura uh, and Joey Ching from our office. You guys, raise your hands.
Is there I don't see anybody's hands being raised unfortunately or any other video footage. Um, or s Oh, yes?
Joey Ching, I got it. I got his hand raised. Joey Ching's here.
Okay, Joey Ching, alright.
Yeah.
Thank you. If whoever is presenting um, regarding this can um, un mute themselves, say hi and also um activate their video feed if possible. We'd appreciate that.
Uh, Chair, that would be me.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Lance, um, go ahead and move forward with your presentation.
Okay. Okay, so I'm sharing my screen. Um, if uh, everybody can see that, okay? Um, if not, let me know. Okay. Okay, thank you Chair and uh, board members and community members uh, for allowing us uh, here today. Um, we'd like to give the neighborhood board uh, a briefing on uh, this project. As Christie mentioned, uh, the project name is uh, Manoa Stream Erosion Control Improvements. Uh, and it's being uh, administered by the City and County of Honolulu, uh, Department of Design and Construction. Uh, so a brief outline of our presentation, uh, we'll go over the project location. Um, project, uh, project purpose, uh, proposed actions, uh, project impacts and um, and then finally, um we'll get into the uh, resident questions and comments that uh, that came in uh, during um uh, during our consultation period. Okay, so the project location, um is within the uh, Manoa Gardens elderly housing uh, property, um which is a city-owned property, uh, and along Manoa Stream. Um, actually like a small portion of of Manoa Stream is what we're looking at. Um, now the satellite imagery doesn't uh, really accurately reflect the uh, property line in relation to the stream. Um, so we thought we'd show you the uh, original tax map uh, from, I believe it's nineteen thirty-eight. Um and you can see that the uh, property line originally as drawn was actually in the middle of Manoa Stream. So with half of the uh, stream being within the elderly housing side and then half uh, within the private properties uh, on the Diamond Head side. So uh, there's no easement or no right of way specifically for the stream. Okay, so what is the purpose of this project? Um Well, the uh, embankment along the Manoa Gardens elderly housing side is very badly eroded. Um, so we took some pictures to uh, to show you the extent of the erosion. Uh, so this is on the property uh, looking uh, looking Maoka. Um, so you can see that the uh, the embankment is pretty significantly eroded. Uh, if we look from the uh, the other direction, we can see that the um um, the embankment has actually partially collapsed into the stream, uh, exposing uh, some of this, uh, looks like an irrigation pipe. And then um, towards the Maoka end, uh, there's actually a forty-eight inch drainage culvert um, that outlets into the stream. And then uh, the structure here would be the head wall. And then the view from the Maoka end, we can see that um, you know, this this head wall uh, is probably the the only thing that's saving the uh, um, the embankment from further collapse. And then looking further down, we can see how how close the erosion is to the uh, to the concrete path. Uh, and then so the purpose of the project is to uh, stabilize the embankment to prevent further collapse. We also took some pictures uh, within the stream. Uh, so you can see on the, on the right here, this is looking downstream. Uh, the eroded embankment. Uh, and then looking upstream. So we can see how the erosion has affected the stream bank. Um, you know, where the vegetation has basically collapsed into the embankment and this significantly affects the flow characteristics of the stream. So again, back to our um, aerial photograph, uh, the the project location uh, is basically the extent of the eroded embankment. Um, and then at the uh, at the top of the um uh, or the Maoka end of the property, uh, the forty-eight inch drainage uh, culvert uh, enters from the left-hand side. And then from the right-hand side, uh, is is another uh, drainage channel, which is the uh, the Woodlawn ditch. So the confluence of of both of these uh, stream, uh, or both of these inputs may have contributed to some of the erosion on the site. So the proposed actions, what exactly are we going to be uh, proposing? Um The design uh, that we're proposing is a gabian retaining wall. Uh, which would take, basically take the place of the existing eroded embankment. Um, and then a thin gabian mattress uh, along the uh, stream bed extending towards the middle of the stream, which would prevent scouring uh, and undermining of the retaining wall. Um, and the gabian wall also extends uh, towards the elderly housing site in the vicinity of the forty-eight inch uh, drain culvert outlet. So what exactly is a gabian retaining wall? Well, there's an example. Um, right across the stream, I believe the address is uh, thirty-one forty-eight East Manoa Road. So gabian uh, retaining wall is basically uh, constructed of rectangular wire baskets, um filled with um, um, you know, very thick aggregates. So in our case, we're looking at uh, four to eight inch rock. And the weight of the whole structure is what anchors anchors everything in place uh, to prevent further collapse of the soil behind. Okay, so back to our top view, um we uh, also uh, took some cross-sections of the proposed uh, retaining wall just to show you what um you know, what it would look like from the profile view of the stream. So we have uh, A on the downstream and B, C and D towards the upstream end. So we can see that the gabian um, uh, retaining wall is in basically the same place and replacing the eroded embankment. Uh, the height um, is approximately fifteen feet high. Uh, and the top elevation uh, is intended to match the existing uh, top bank level on the elderly housing side. Um, the width at the base is approximately ten feet, um, narrowing to approximately three feet at the top. And then the gabian mattresses, which are just a thin, um, you know, a thin gabian layer um, at the bottom of the uh, at the foot of the wall, um, extends in the stream approximately eight to ten feet. So we can see uh, from uh, cross-section C, um, that the gabian wall would extend uh, a little bit further towards the uh uh, forty-eight drain culvert outlet, uh, towards the uh, the Maoka end of the property. And then so, um the cross-sections demonstrate uh, two things. Firstly, that the uh, gabian walls will not increase uh, the top level or or height of the stream bank on on the elderly housing side. Uh, and also that the cross-sectional area of the stream uh, will not be reduced. In fact, um, you know, our estimate is that that the cross-sectional area of the stream will be slightly increased. So a close-up aerial view of the um, of the stream and the elderly housing site, um, the gabian walls would be approximately situated something like this. Okay, so project impacts, what what impact will this have? This is a question that everybody, everybody wants to know. Um, so the project is limited to the uh, Manoa Gardens elderly housing side of the stream. Uh, so we believe that there will be minimal impact to adjacent properties. Uh, the stream width and the cross-sectional area will not be significantly altered. Uh, and also the existing elevation along the top of the stream bank will uh, remain unchanged. And then how exactly will this be vetted? Well, um as part of the permitting process, uh, we will be required to submit to the Department of Planning and Permitting, uh, proof of no rise. Um, and um this will be done uh, through uh, completing a water surface impact uh, analysis using um a specific uh, uh, stream flow modeling software. And uh, I'm not sure if if my colleague Joey Ching, if his audio is available, maybe um uh, Joey, you can uh, give a brief description of the software?
Sure, yeah. I can talk about that a little bit. Um, so uh, the program we use is called HECRAS and HECRAS is a program that was developed by the US Army Corps of Engineers to analyze river flows. Uh, so basically, this program allows us to create models of river flows during a storm or high-flow events. So in this case, for our analysis, we use the hundred-year storm. This is a pretty typical for these types of water surface analysis. Um, so this basically means that the odds of this storm happening are one percent or maybe one in a hundred years. Um, so the models that we we create with this program, uh, they give us the potential water surface uh, during the hundred-year storm and we can create a model for the existing bank conditions versus a model for the proposed bank with the new gabian wall installation. And after we created these and compared them, we could see that there's no rise in the water surface elevation when comparing the new water surface or the proposed water surface to the existing conditions. Uh, so based on that, we can kind of infer that um the gabian wall installation won't increase the chance of flooding over the stream banks into private residences, which was from of the concern. Uh, there's also some concern about uh, the gabian wall causing more erosion on the I guess, the the private homeowner's side, because it wouldn't have the same reinforcing as the gabian wall. Uh, so there's, you can also use HECRAS, uh, which we did. Uh, we did a study to compare the velocities that are existing and also compared to the velocities that would be in the stream with the newly proposed gabian wall. And uh, based on this, the analysis shows that there's no increase in the velocities on the homeowner's side of the stream bank um, with the new gabian wall. And the velocities actually decrease on the gabian wall side of the stream bank. Uh, so based on that, we can infer that there won't be any increase in erosion on the residential side of the stream bank.
Okay, thank you, Joey. And um, you know, we would say that this is uh, kind of the expected result. Um, because of the improved improved uh, flow characteristics uh, of the gabians versus the existing bank, which is, you know, um which is rife with vegetation and whatnot, uh, and also because of the, you know, the changes in minor changes in cross-sectional area. I apologize. I fast forwarded it a little bit too quick. Okay, and the final uh, final point on the impact uh, is that there will be uh, minimal or no impact to archaeological and natural resources. Um, and actually, we um, we initiated a couple of studies. Uh, we uh, had our archaeological consultant complete um uh, an archaeological literature review, uh, which was submitted to the State Historic Preservation uh, Division. Uh, and they uh, subsequently concurred that there is no historic, uh, earth, sorry, there's no, no uh, no historic properties affected. Uh, and also um natural resources assessment of Manoa Stream in the project vicinity was completed. Uh, that concluded that no uh, protected or uh, threatened or endangered species would be significantly impacted. Uh, and I will also note that the US Fish and Wildlife Service uh, was included in the list of agencies that we uh, reached out to in our initial consultation and it will also be again consulted during the um uh, the permitting process with the Army Corps of Engineers. Okay, so um some of you may have received uh, consultation notices from us. Um, we sent out um uh, packages uh, for, to consult uh, for the purpose of uh, declaring environmental assessment exemption um, to the uh, area residents and uh, and interested agencies at the beginning of March. Um, and comments were effect, uh, accepted for a period of approximately two months. So some of the questions and comments that uh, that we received, um uh, firstly, you know, is the project subject of the chapter three, four, three uh, environmental review process? Uh, is the city seeking an exemption from preparation of an EA and what is the basis? Uh, so to answer, uh, yes, the project is subject to the uh, chapter three, three, four, three environmental review process. Uh, and yes, uh, the Department of Design and Construction is seeking an exemption uh, from the preparation of an EA. Um, so per the uh, the EIS rule, Environmental Impact Statement Rules, uh, which is uh, Hawaii Administrative Rules, uh, chapter eleven uh, dash two hundred. Um, section one dash fifteen states that, quote, uh, some actions, because they will individually and cumulatively probably have minimal or no significant impacts, uh, can be declared exempt from the preparation of an EA. Uh, and the H A R also uh, sets forth, um uh, you know, each agency uh, has um has the responsibility to come up with their own list of actions that are exempt uh, under, you know under, you know, following the H A R. And DDC has determined that stream bank repair, stream bank reconstruction, or stream bank lining would fall under such actions. And then one of the comments that came in from the residents is, you know, the residents over opposed an EA exemption, stating that more studies on the impact of the project would be necessary. And we would say that the studies that would be completed as part of the chapter three, four, three environmental review process already have or will be done as part of the process for the required permits and approvals. You know, and some of these studies are the studies that we had gone over previously. So for example, the water surface impact analysis, which will be vetted by the Department of Planning and Permitting, archaeological literature review, and natural resources survey. And also most of the agencies that would be consulted during the EA process were consulted in our initial consultation in the spring. Question, how will the proposed improvements stabilize the stream bank of Manoa Stream within the Manoa Gardens elderly housing property? So again, you know, the project will stabilize the stream bank by replacing the exposed bank with a Gabian retaining wall, which will be anchored in place by its own weight, allowing the soil and behind the wall to maintain its position and keep from further eroding. Will the project address erosion on the opposite side of the stream? And if no, why not? So the project will only address erosion on the elderly housing side of the stream, which is again a city-owned property. The project was identified in a city island-wide erosion study only within city properties. And the stream bank on the opposite side of the stream and actually anywhere outside of in the vicinity, outside of the elderly housing property, is private property. And the city does not does not have jurisdiction to conduct improvements within within private property. And furthermore, the city is not allowed to use city funds on such work. Okay, so these three questions kind of try to tackle them together. They're related to the the project impact on stream flow and and stream flow during during extreme weather conditions. So question, where would the excess water from extreme weather conditions be directed as a result of the project? How would the project affect water levels during extreme weather conditions? And what is the impact of potential higher water levels on adjacent properties? And the comment that the project would change the way Manoa Stream flows and would could cause the stream flow to redirect and affect homeowners on the opposite side of the stream? So what we would say is that the the proposed Gabian walls will be in the same location, will be the same height, and will serve the same purpose as the existing stream bank. And as we mentioned, as part of the Department of Planning and Permitting Review Process, a water surface impact analysis will be completed to demonstrate that the water level in Manoa Stream will not rise as a result of the, as a result of the project. And as Joey explained, based on the preliminary analysis of the modeling, the project is not anticipated to alter the way the stream flows, nor direct floodwaters to properties on the other side of the stream, nor increase flood levels during extreme weather conditions. But again, we stress that this is going to be vetted through the Department of Planning and Permitting. Okay, we also received some comments with related to the Manoa Banyan Court project, which is upstream of of our project location. And the Manoa Banyan Court project is within the drainage area of the Woodlawn Ditch. And the Woodlawn Ditch is tributary to the Manoa Stream, basically across from our project location. So the comments that we received, some of the comments that we received, the proposed Manoa Banyan Court project may add to the runoff carried by Manoa Stream in the project area. And also erosion on the Manoa Gardens elderly housing side is a consequence of inflow from the Woodlawn Ditch. And even with the project improvements, this inflow would cause water to slow down back up and lead to flooding. So there was actually a environmental assessment done for the Manoa Banyan Court project. It's available for public review on the on the Environmental Review Office website. So the draft EA actually conducted a drainage assessment stating that the project would not result in any significant increase in the peak stormwater runoff from the Woodlawn Ditch through utilization of on-site detention systems, which would attenuate the peak flow. So accordingly, the additional runoff carried by Manoa Stream contributed by the Manoa Banyan Court project would be negligible. As far as the inflow into Manoa Stream from the Woodlawn Ditch, that may be a contributing factor to the erosion on the elderly housing side of the stream. However, the project improvements would not only protect the stream bank from erosion, but as Joey mentioned, may actually increase the capacity of Manoa Stream, which would thereby reduce the risk of flooding within the Manoa Ditch. And I think that covers most of the comments that we received. I think at this point, we'd be open to take any additional questions and our comments.
Thank you, Blatz. I see first off, a hand raised by Laura Ruby. Laura?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm assuming that you are going to clean the vegetation and the excess soil before you put in this retaining wall. But my question is basically, the mattress you're putting in ten feet into the stream, the, a natural stream has boulders and it has a natural roiling effect to calm the water. And when you remove that, you are going to have a swift flowing water over this mattress. And is the mattress going to be permeable? That would be the questions I'd ask you. Thank you.
Yeah, so the mattress is actually, it's basically a Gabian. It's, it's, it's the same as the Gabian, it's just thinner. So it's, it's, it's basically just, you know, a thin wire basket with, with filled with thick rocks. So I believe I'd said between four and eight inches. Now, I know there, and in our pictures, we'd shown the existing stream, stream bed is, you know, covered with rocks. I don't know the exact sizes, but the Gabian mattress is basically constructive, constructed of rocks as well.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you. The Gabian walls, like across the way from the elderly project is the Hayama residence that put in a Gabian wall. Right? And you know, they're like totally ugly. So what are you going to do about the aesthetics of that? We're just going to look at this rock wall and and chain link fencing on it? I mean, it really is aesthetically really unpleasing. And it's kind of like visual blight, even if it shores up your stream bank. So, you know, this is a problem. I think.
Well, we're open for suggestions. Yeah, I'm not sure if there are any aesthetic you know, improvements we can do to the Gabians, though we can certainly look into that.
Thank you. Elton?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to defer my questions. I see the hands raised from two people who live exactly in this area, so I'm going to defer to them. I'm talking about Mac and Glenn. Thank you.
Thanks, Elton. Mac? Mac, you're muted.
Sorry, I forgot your name, but my question is about your timeline. What is the estimated timeline to begin and to complete?
So again, it'll depend on the permitting process, but the city would like to, I believe, Christie, correct me if I'm wrong, begin this in fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-five. And the construction period could be approximately a year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
I'm certainly not an engineer, and I don't have any basis in this, but I it just from a common sense point of view, it would seem that if one is trying to control the stream flow, one would look at the entire stream. And I realize you're constrained because you don't own it, the private people own it. But is there some advantage to really looking at the whole thing rather than doing just half of it?
Well, again, you know, as far as improvements goes, like I mentioned, the city, the city cannot expend funds to do any work on private property. But as far as looking at the flow characteristics of the stream, and Joey, maybe you can jump in, but the, our water surface elevation analysis looks at, you know, a longer reach of the Manoa Stream in terms of the impacts. But as far as improvements, you know, the city is kind of, you know, they have their hands tied. They can't do any work on private property.
To make available to private property access to you, so the the private property owners can form some sort of hooey and say, okay, since you're doing this side, why don't you do our side too? And and give us a price, you know? You know, and amortize it over the owners, you know what I mean? Have them pay their share. I think owners might be just interested in getting that kind of help to protect their properties, actually. If it was made attractive, you know, not a lot, you know, just a good cost share of it, you know? If you think about it.
Sure, I understand the concerns. Yeah, as far as the city goes, the city couldn't facilitate any of that. And we, you know, Fuquen Noggin Associates, we're the design consultant for the city. Yeah, I I can't really comment on on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
Yes, thank you. As I recall, when my neighbor put up their Gabian wall, as part of their work, they they put a huge platform into the stream for their construction equipment to start placing all the materials against the Gabian wall. And they they actually got cited because they took out more than what was specified on their permits. And they refined something like thirty thousand dollars or something. And what what happened upstream was a little damming effect started occurring where all the material that's flowing down the stream was collecting above and started to make our side of the stream a little bit longer into the stream bank, which is fine, I mean, because it's protecting our stream side. But now that you're going to do one on your side, what, what are you folks are going to be doing to create this Gabian wall? Are you going to put a platform on your side? And where where it's going to push all the debris down on our side? What is?
Yeah, we haven't, sorry, sorry, continue.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, again, we're very early in the design process for this project. And, you know, construction details are something we would look at further on down the road. But, you know, when we determine these details, we would be happy to come back and brief you folks on on the logistics. But that's, that's not a question I could answer at this point.
Yeah, because I'm really concerned when you told, when you said it's going to take about a year for this project to be completed. So does that mean you're going to have this large platform in the stream for about a year to allow the stream flowing down on on our side of the stream, pushing all the debris that was collected during the that first Gabian wall and start to thin out our side of the stream bank, cause more erosion? I'm kind of concerned about that.
Right. So when we say like a year of construction time, you know, we're thinking more along the lines of construction time from start to finish, not necessarily just work in the stream itself. So, you know, again, as we get further on down the design, we have a better handle of you know, tasks and timelines and whatnot, we would be happy to come back and brief you folks.
Yes, I would very much like to hear about that because if if you folks are spending a lot of time in stream and we see a thinning effect on our side, we want to see if there's any plans to alleviate that kind of problem.
Sure, understood.
All right, thank you. Jay Mitchell, Jay, if you could also provide us with your full first name, we'd appreciate that, just for everybody's, and for the record.
Sure, Janice Mitchell, and thank you, Chair Zane. I have concerns that you seem to be taking the, sorry, this is to Mr. Fukamoto, but you seem to be taking the environmental assessment done for the Manoa Banyan Court at face value. There is no promise to actually implement the detention basins. And there seem to be errors in, or at least issues with not only their modeling of what a hundred year storm is, but how big the flow into the Woodlawn Ditch would be based on just, you know, regular sort of drainage issues. For example, they included in their drainage study a piece of the property that is not being worked on, that's in the middle of of that's across the street from where the actual site will be, which makes their flow rates look a lot better than they actually will be. So my concern is that when you now put up this Gabian wall, you're going to have increased flow from the Manoa Banyan Court, when and if that project goes through, that will be significantly greater than what you're planning for. And that's going to affect not just property owners up and down the stream, but, you know, the the stream itself and everyone who uses the park, everyone at the Manoa Gardens and all of the folks along the stream. So I think you should take a second look at the EA, and I think you should also take a look at what some of the comments were from the people in Manoa, because there are like eighty comments, and a lot of people here are like structural engineers and have at least some minimal expertise in this. Thank you.
Okay, again, you know, the the environmental assessment is a published document. So upon reading it, we, you know, we had no, we had no reason to to doubt it. So when the final environmental assessment comes out, we'll, you know, we'll again review it. But just in terms of context, you know, compared to our project, the Manoa Banyan Court drainage study stated that the increase in flow under a ten-year storm would be from forty-three to sixty-four CFS. So just in terms of context, you know, the Woodlawn Ditch carries under a ten-year storm, six hundred CFS. And and just to, you know, compare that to Manoa Stream itself, and Joey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Manoa Stream storm, the hundred-year storm, so we're talking, you know, a different, you know, different storm event, was nine thousand. So you know, but again, we'll revisit the issue when the final environmental assessment comes out.
Okay, thank you. I see Elton's hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I'm asking a procedural question. You you've brought this before the board. Do you expect the board? Do you expect the board to uh, either approve or disapprove of this project in a vote at some time? And i- if that's true, uh, will the board be able to examine some of the documents that uh, for example, the um, the 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 kind of water flow modeling that that you have described? So so um, are you are you hoping or or is part of the um, approval process for this project that you bring it before the board and ask for a for a formal board vote? And if that's true, then uh, when?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I'm not really sure if um, you know, we were requested to appear before the board to, you know, prepare the projects. So I guess the hope was that um, you know, with more information, we could receive the board's blessing to to move ahead. And then, you know, as far as sharing information, I mean, we believe in transparency, so um, you know, we we would be happy to share any documentation as the as the project moves along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's a question from the community if um, the presentation could actually be um, distributed and shared amongst, I guess if there's could be a link to it or if it can be shared um, electronically.
Yes, we can make it available. Um, yeah, just let us know where where to send it.
Okay.
Maybe just send it to Judy Anne, and Judy Anne, you can send it out to everybody on the mailing list or something.
Judy, is that possible for you?
Yep, that's definitely possible. Do you guys have a Google Drive for your board? I just wanted to ask.
I personally am not aware of one in existence. Does any other member of the board have an idea of that, of one exists?
If not, then what I can do is I can get the information from you and then I can distribute it to the um, and then if they want to distribute it to anybody that would like that as well, if it's public information.
Yes. Judy, if you can add an email address, somebody that Lance can email you the presentation that we, uh, that'd be appreciated.
Sure.
Lance, I'm also going to submit my email as well. If you could CC me on your email to Judy, uh, so that I can at least get a copy of the presentation and I can distribute it to members of the board if necessary, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll do.
And um, remember both, so your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you Chair. Um, I guess is is somebody still from DDC there as well as Mr. Fukamoto?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, so talking about the um, EA for the MBC, do you, can you confirm? Uh, Mr. Fukamoto said at the beginning of his presentation there that, you know, the erosion was due to the confluence of both the Manoa Stream as well as the Woodlawn ditch entering that area, correct?
Yes.
I'm just curious.
Said, we we suspect it might be, but there's no, I mean,
Define it, sure.
Yes.
Um, no one can prove causation. Can you speak to why DDC had no comments on the draft EA during the period that other um, you know, agencies like DPP, the reason that the comment period is open, the comment period is for other agencies as well as the public to comment on an EA, not after the final EA is presented, and then at that point, DPP is meant to issue their recommendation. Can you speak at all to why DDC is pursuing a project related to erosion from the confluence, you know, here? And in, you know, problems with the embankment disappearing because of increased um, you know, waters in that place, but has no comment on a project that's looking at taking a heavily wooded area and adding probably two acres when you think about roof as well as parking lots of impermeable surface from what's currently heavily forested to impermeable surface. Whether or not they're designing some detention basins, maybe. Again, it's all very um, hypothetical in what the EA proposes. But for, you know, that's going to attenuate during a peak storm event, they are uh, unquestionably going to be adding to the amount of runoff entering the Woodlawn ditch due to that project. Can you speak at all as to why DDC had no comments during the uh, comment period?
Are you respond, are you referring to the draft EA for the Manoa Banyan Court?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, I'm sorry, I don't know what the reason is. I wasn't involved with that.
Do you know whether it was reviewed in the in the DDC? In relation, I mean, in the the fact that you're taking up a project just immediately downstream from this, I would sort of assume that it was looked at closely. Can you speak to that at all or no?
Um, I don't know, I'm sorry. I can try to find out.
I would really appreciate that because the EA process, as far as I understand it from everyone at DPP, is meant to solicit comments not just from community members, but from other agencies, you know, and other um, departments. It, I I have that from the lips of people at DPP, they are asking for the uh, expertise of their fellow members at that point to weigh in on what is being proposed. That is the entire, you know, point of the draft EA, not to comment after the final proposal is made, because at that point, DPP is supposed to be issuing a comment. Or I mean, uh, you know, uh, sort of judgment on whether to allow a project to go forward. So I would really appreciate if you could look into that and get back to me personally, my uh, contact is listed under, I'm a neighborhood board member.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and um, anybody else, because of time constraints, it's already nine thirty six. Um, this, if anybody else would be the last comment, but I'm not seeing anybody else. In which case, Lance, everybody else on on the team for the city and county who worked on this and for coming tonight, thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate you giving us that presentation and allowing the community to talk with you about this.
Thank you for having us.
Uh, thank you, uh, sorry for taking up so much of your time, but uh, I appreciate uh, I appreciate the interest in the project. Thank you.
No, thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on on the agenda to board business. This hopefully should be relatively quick. So first on board business is filling up.
Can I say something?
Uh, um, is it related to the past comment? And if so, please make a quick.
Oh, it relates to this new section you're going to talk about.
Okay.
What, one of the things I wanted to mention is that board members were re- were requested by NCO to send those three documents back. One signing that we took the oath of office, one saying we reviewed the Sunshine Law video, and the other putting our contact information. And so we had done that with Partner, and then apparently Judy Anne didn't have it, or NCO didn't have it, even though I got a confirmation from Partner, it was received. So then she asked me to send it to her again, so I sent it again. And then what appears in our thing is my email address spelled incorrectly. So so it's wrong. So it just seems like at the last meeting, I asked our neighborhood assistant, whoever it was, if to just use for the existing board members the contact information that you've already had for years and years. And and instead of trying to have everything new because my email address is spelled wrong, so that I don't know if that's on your NCO website, Judy Anne, or that's certainly on our agenda. I'll never get an email from that. And you removed the phone number I had that was listed there, and Robert Zane, your phone number used to be down there, and Elton Fukamoto, your email used to be there, and now we have no contact information for anybody, so Judy Anne, please just go back a couple, three months and use the information that you have, and and if there are changes, you can just ask at a board meeting, members, do you have any changes to your contact information? And that way, you can just get that instead of trying to do it from scratch, because you guys are doing it wrong anyway, for the last two months, so please, if if we can just do that, so that the community can contact us and stuff.
Uh, Chair Zane, can I address Member Watson?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so base, so after Partner left, we were given all of the documentation for the Manoa in the stages of initial convening, all of the, we had size or T-shirt size that we're going to have for all the board members this year. That's the reason why we were, we were told by our administration that we needed all new documents. So in regards to your, in regard, hold on, in regards to your email, I can definitely change that. That was just a type of mistake which I can update. I want to say that that is probably the correct, the correct email is on the NCO website, but let me check just to make sure. But in regards to all of the other forms such as the oath of office, then um, had to be at some point in time in either the next meeting, which is the initial convening, where we had to have you guys sign off on that, we can't just say that, okay, you guys are inside. But I'm just saying is that I understand that you guys had all of the previous information sent to us, I think point of contact, the only reason why we put in um, in the emails or on even on your agenda, is because we only just put one point of contact. If you want to have an additional one, if you want me to.
Judy, you're cutting in and out.
Okay, oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That better? Okay, so I can update, I can update everybody's information. The thing is, is that the board information, we needed to have a little bit more information, it was a little bit different than what we had in the past. So I will change the, um, I'll change Member Watson's email to make it correct. And I will add whoever gave me all the information. The thing is, is right now, because the Manoa Board actually being alternated with other NAs, we have to try and keep the um, paperwork in one place after Partner left. So right now, we're working on trying to get a permanent um, and until that time comes, I supervisor, Naomi Hano Hano, is the one that's keeping your information, so.
Judy, you're cutting out again.
If you thought, if until we find a permanent NA for the board, for the Manoa Board, we I ha- I'm just trying to be, trying to do diligence by getting all the information. That's why I ask everybody to resend all of the information, regardless if we had had it or not, and I still did not get everybody's information, just to mention.
That's why I suggest you use the old information and ask them if there's something different. And for years and years and years, we did the oath of office. It was videotaped, you could review the videotape, and we never had to sign that we took the oath of office ever in the last decade, so.
It's it's a new standard that we had to do for this elective year, this is something that.
Where did that come from?
It's
Ellen?
It's from our office, it's not just me, it's from our office. Every single, all four hundred, um, all four hundred members of the Neighborhood Commission Office had to redo all of their paperwork, so it wasn't just Manoa or you. It's everybody, especially after an elective um, year. All, everybody has to retake their oath of office. That's just how it is for procedure in our department, so. I'm just, please don't kill the messenger, I'm just letting you know from my department, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Zane, this is uh, somewhat related. I brought this up to some folks at the um, convening meeting or whatever it was called that was held.
Installation?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I just think it would be a good idea for folks to ask, because you just mentioned something about the T-shirts again. I would imagine not everyone necessarily is ever going to wear a T-shirt. There's a huge amount of waste in textiles. I would ask people if they want them before you just print and send it to everyone. Because that's a lot of, um, that's a lot of unnecessary money and material waste that might be happening. That's just, that's all.
Okay, um, Judy, don't even come. Yeah, uh, just for the interest of time, I need to move on on this. So first off, um, Judy, we still have nine board members here, correct? Okay, because we have nine board members and we do have a quorum, I'm going to take this out of order. I'm going to, let's see if we can get through the approval of the Wednesday, July fifth, reg- regular meeting minutes first. Does anybody?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of July
Do we have a second?
I second that.
My second from Member Koff. Oh, um, is there anybody who objects? Hearing and seeing none. Motion is approved by unanimous consent to approve the uh, Wednesday, July fifth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes. Moving on on the next agenda item for the approval of the Wednesday, August second, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes, I need a motion.
Um, I I want to discuss this, so I will um, make the motion for discussion.
I need a second for motion to discuss.
I second it.
Second by Member Koff. So um, discussion on the meeting minutes for August second, what is the concern?
So um, I I believe since November of last year, um, Member Koff and I have been ju- have been doing um, revisions and edits to the neighborhood board minutes. And I've been planning to um, keep doing that, but Member Koff and I had a discussion regarding the minutes from last meeting. And um, she she might be better to explain it than than me, but essentially, Member Koff had concerns about the fact that when we do minutes, we have to um, paraphrase people and that this runs the risk of not um, recording what they said in the way that they would want to be said. So um, personally, I am comfortable um, paraphrasing people and editing the minutes, but you know, um, if if Member Koff feels differently about that, then since um, she's secretary, I I will um, defer to her on that.
I'll make it nice, Member Koff first. Joe?
Yeah, what I have to say is the reason I've given it a lot of consideration, that's one part of it. Uh, there's a second feature. Basically, our minutes, why are are the recording of our se- sessions are available on Olelo. And then also on the NCO website, we have full recording on of our many minutes, and these are uh, going to be there indefinitely there on that website. So we have an actual record. The minutes that we are produced now are are um, somewhat uh, are are brief, but it directs the the concerned reader to the areas that are discussed. And anyone who's concerned can then look up the other information. I feel that um, and I have done it myself, when I write the minutes, I will you can't help but be influenced by your own perceptions and your own uh, thoughts about what you'd like to see happen. And in in this environment, or in any environment, the things that one writes down or records will be subject to your own feelings and also to your own memory and so forth. And I think it's best to be accurate, and we don't have the money to have verbatim transcript performed on each of our meetings and so forth. Uh, not the Library of Congress here and and so forth of the Senate and and therefore, we we, I I think that what we do have is a good direction that will take the interested reader to to the points of view uh, that have been uh, expressed. And that's my feeling about it, and I I think there's a lot of, it it requires a lot of extra works, and I'm not sure how profitable it it is. This is my feeling about it, okay.
Thank you Joan. Ellen?
Thank you. So, so like, I guess, first of all, I have a question. So, we have kind of good, well-explained minutes from July, and that's because you and Dave filled in what Partner took? Is that why those are good, and the memorandum of record is junk? Where it just says, "Questions, comments, and concerns followed." "Questions, comments, and concern followed." That tells us nothing. So when the community weighs in on something, and they're concerned about something, none of that is noted in here. So it's like junk. I mean-
And I want to go back to, oh, excuse-
So my question is, is that something that Joan and Dave has been doing because Partner failed to do it? Like, you know, our former assistant Russell Ho made great minutes, because our board has asked before that we want more detail in them. We don't want just some rubber stamp, somebody made a comment, but we don't even know what or who.
Just to quickly- Just to quickly answer Member Watson's question, yes, since November, when we had that meeting where we talked about the NCO minutes policy, Member Koff and I have been going through each agenda item and adding details about the conversation, about the questions that were asked. So that was us going through and doing edits on the draft that Partner gave, and-
Well, that's wonderful, but you shouldn't have to do it. That's why the NCO neighborhood assistants get paid. They, that's why they earn their paycheck. And Russell Ho, for years and years and years, made wonderful minutes to us. And, and, you know, if they're going to record the minutes, I think they should record the minutes and not just give a rubber stamp of what seems to be easy so they don't have to do it.
Judy? Judy, you're doing it.
Yeah, okay, so, so everybody in the board, just to let you know, all the NAs are as a courtesy for the board. Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, you cut off the number, it's over again.
All right, I'm not sure why this is happening, but I'm just letting you guys know that according to the neighborhood plan, it's the secretary's responsibility to keep accurate minutes. You can look into the plan, it's actually, it's actually Section 2-14, and you can look under secretary's responsibilities under the neighborhood plan. So what it is, is that technically, the NAs are here as a courtesy to do your minutes. And with that being said, yes, in the past, the way that was interpreted, like when Russell did it before, Russell, I'm not going to speak to past information only because he's not here to justify himself, okay? But what it is, is we're using the video, plus the YouTube video, as areas of if people want to look at a certain area, it's timestamped, you know, like one hour, 14 minutes, you know, question, comments, and concerns are only timestamped only because to hear the question, comments, concerns, and discussions verbatim from the video. So whether it's going to be, and the video is timestamped based upon the YouTube video, which is public knowledge. So that is the reason why we don't add the questions, comments, and concerns, because those parts of the questions, comments, and concerns can be misinterpreted if we're doing an overview of it. That's why the timestamp is the way that it is. At this point, if, again, when we're done with the draft minutes, we submit it to the secretary, and CC whoever wants to assist him or her with the minutes. After that transaction is done, it is basically the board's minute. Basically, the secretary who wants to edit and change whatever they want, as long as it's done in enough time before the mail-out, we will pull- By that time, it's your minute. We are not responsible completely and solely to be done verbatim. That's not how it is for the NCO. I'm just letting you know.
Joan? And Joan's going to be the last comment on this.
I'm muted. I read through the minutes, and, you know, it seems to me that most people don't read them at all. I want to be, no offense, but it just goes in that paper basket thing, and most people don't. And when we're really interested, and I go back to my original point, when we're really interested in something, and it's important, we ought to, and it's timestamped for us, so we can actually go right into the section that we want. One minute, 32 seconds, we can go right there and go right into that discussion and hear everything we want to hear. And, and go ahead. To, to, I really think it's an unnecessary duplication of effort, frankly. You know, honestly, I do. That's my feeling about it. Okay.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to call for the vote regarding the regular meeting minutes for August 2nd, 2023. See if we can get, if that approves, so be-
There's a memorandum of record, there's not minutes because we didn't have quorum.
Oh, that's right. I forgot we didn't have quorum on August 2nd. Thank you for correcting me on that, Ellen. In which case, that's a good question. I guess that doesn't, I guess that would be for the record, but we don't actually have minutes to approve on that.
Chair?
Put it forward to Judy, yeah, Judy.
So if you guys don't want to approve the minutes, it won't be posted. That's the thing. It's going to be considered a draft. That means that there's no approval of the minutes at all. That's why the quorum needs to be, that's why it needs to be voted on, unless you guys want to just keep it as a draft. But that, that would be considered incomplete. So on the NCO, on the NCO website, we have, on the NCO website, we have the draft minutes and the board-approved minutes.
Yeah, but the, right?
But Judy, as a clarification, because we didn't have memorandum, we didn't have quorum for that meeting, would memorandum still be considered minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They're draft minutes, but they're considered memorandum only for the fact that at the previous meeting, which was August, you guys did not have quorum, but it's still minutes that needs to be approved. And it'll keep on, it'll be open as a draft, and you guys will, every month, you guys will still revisit it to be voted on.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that. So I guess we do need to approve the memorandum, even though we did not have quorum at that meeting. So-